All right, thank you for joining us for the Dushuts County Board of Commissioners meeting, August 18th, 2021. First item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first item on the agenda is citizen input for items that are not on the agenda. Shawn Hartfield is joining us today.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for having me this morning. I am Shawn Hartfield. I am the chairperson of the Redmond School Board of Directors. And we are seeing a statewide movement of public officials asking, fighting, and taking legal action against Governor Brown in order to regain local authority over COVID-19 issues and masking. I am here today to ask that you three consider doing the same. Governor Brown made a promise to Oregonians that local control would be given back once the state vaccination rate reached 70%. Yet, here we are again, with another set of one-size-fits-all rules and mandates without any achievable metrics or exit strategy. All we have are threats, fines against our businesses, our teachers, and our school districts. Let's work together to do what is best for our community. I appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in, Shawn. And thanks for the job that you do.
If you can't stay for the remainder of the meeting, there will be a COVID update at 10:00, which you could watch at a later point because it'll be video recorded.
I will log back in definitely. Thank you.
We're doing that at 9:30 today.
Sorry, 9:30. 9:30 today.
It'll be coming up quick. Great, thank you. So no consent agenda today, so at this time, item number one, addition of the proposed addition of three FTE for landfill site attendant positions. Chad Centola, thanks for joining us.
Good morning. Chad Centola, interim director for the Department of Solid Waste. This action for you today is to give you background for a resolution we'll be presenting next week to add three additional FTEs, solid waste site attendants, to the staff for the solid waste department. There's two different factors driving this, so I'm going to break this up into two discussions here. The first one is our use of contract temporary labor in a department. During the recession, we laid off a number of staff, and in 2010, we reduced the operating hours at Not Landfill and Nigus Transfer Station to six days a week. We were closing on Sundays. And in 2015, we expanded hours at Not Landfill to run seasonally on Sundays during the spring and summer season. We've been filling the staffing needs for that time with contracted temporary staff. And in discussions during that time with the union that represents our employees, it was agreed that we would continue to staff with temporary personnel until we get a good feel and handle on how our staffing needs fall out. And we've been doing this for quite a while now, and it's time to review this situation. During the fall and winter season, we staff with eight FTEs and the equivalent of 1.75 temporary staff. And considering vacation, sick leave, things like that, that 1.75 temporary staff essentially work full-time schedules during that period. When we go to Sunday operations during the spring and summer, we add an additional 2.25 temporary staff on top of the 1.75 that we already have. So for all practical purposes, we are using temporary staff as FTEs year-round, two positions. And we have one temp that's been working with us for a little over two years now as example of where our situation sits with this. So I talked with the HR department about this, and they agree that it is time to take a closer look at this, and we need to resolve this temporary staffing situation. So two of the positions we're asking for are to eliminate using temporary staff or what are essentially FTE positions. And I'll take a break at this point, see if you have any specific questions regarding this topic.
Chad, I'm curious what the cost comparison is. You know, I am 100% supportive of converting these, essentially converting these temporary contractor positions to full-time employees. But I'm curious kind of what it costs us to have those people right now, and what it will cost us to have them as regular employees.
Yeah, so as regular employees, at the top end of the pay scale, they're at about $85,000 a year. With temporary staff, we pay them an equivalent hourly rate, but they don't get the, obviously don't get the benefits that we get with our staff. So I think that the temporary labor probably drops it down from $85,000 to about $45,000 to $50,000 per year for those. We budget about $250,000 a year for temporary labor staff at this time. To bridge the budget gap for this current year, we're looking at reducing our temporary labor costs by $180,000 for the balance of this fiscal year. That money will be used to cover those FTE costs. Another part of the cost savings part of it is we do have some FTE staffing dollars that have not been used. I'm at a slightly lower pay scale than Tim was as director, and my prior position as operation manager is vacant at this time, so there's those cost savings there with it. Plus, we had a delay in hiring our staff member in the office, so there's some dollars available there. So back on your question, Commissioner Chang, it basically is $85,000 for an FTE with full benefits, and for a temp, it's about $46,000 to $50,000.
Are these, the temporary positions, have, you know, single individuals been filling those for, you know, for multiple years?
We have one that's been here for about two years. The balance of the temporary staff we use, they too tend to come and go. We have a few that we've recently gotten on board. It's a challenge to find people when they leave. I'm sure you've seen in the media, the temporary agencies have hundreds of positions they're trying to fill, and only a handful of people that are applying. So when we lose a temporary staff position, it's a struggle for us to get somebody back in, and it kind of develops where we have to fill a lot of people in overtime until we get those people in.
So this will provide substantial benefits with employee recruitment and retention as well?
Yes, yeah, yeah. Again, that staffing is always a challenge, especially these days here, but that will provide us a lot of stability.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner, I was just going to add, if you recall, during our budget deliberations this year, we had a similar situation at Fair and Expo at the RV park with temporary employees who had been in those positions for some time. And in addition to the, you know, benefit that Chad just mentioned in terms of recruitment and stability, there's also, you know, a question of there's a tax implications in, you know, paying for a regular employee that's been doing that job for some time. And we lose the benefit, the flexibility of temporary employees, but after a certain point, you know, when it becomes clear that there's an ongoing need for that function, then we really, both legally and in fairness to the employee, really need to look at, is this, you know, an ongoing, you know, body of work that needs to be done? And at that point, we would look at this kind of a conversion. So there is precedent for doing this as part of the normal operations among county departments.
Oh, Chad, I would like to note that if it's 69,452 per employee times three, it's actually, it's 208,356. It says 626. I mean, it's a, there's a, that number is just a tiny bit off.
Okay, yeah. I'll get with the finance on that and make sure it's corrected in the resolution.
Okay.
So my question would be about the seasonality. You know, are there summer and winter hours, and then are we going to be adding staff as we're going into a slower season? Or what's the vision there?
Yeah, typically during the slower season, we reduce staff. We close Sundays at Not Landfill. There's a temporary staff that go away for that. And at Southwest Transfer Station, Lapine is a tremendously growing community, so our traffic picks up substantially during the summertime. So we've been staffing a second person down there during the busy season, essentially the same season that not runs seven days a week. So when winter comes, yeah, we do reduce our temporary staffing.
So that'll still be done with temporary staffing?
Correct, because of the seasonal nature of that need.
Yeah, okay.
So are you saying that the station then in Lapine is running now seven days a week?
No, no, that runs Wednesday through Saturday, four days a week. But during the busy season, we bring an additional person on board to be out on the ground assisting the public, doing maintenance and cleaning duties out there. It's just too much for the single attendant in the scale house to do, excuse me, to do. He just can't get out of the building during the day to do that regular maintenance work.
I know people in that community have asked for more days. Is that going to perhaps be a possibility next summer to add an extra day?
You know, we can certainly explore that. The site is getting busier, no question about it. I mean, all of our sites are. When I talk about the second factor with Nigus, it's pretty evident. If that's something the board wants us to explore, we can certainly look into that.
So yeah, I'd like to have a good spreadsheet of the balance there, because I know that at one point, it was kind of the good fit for how many FTE we had, and if we added any hours anywhere, we'd really need to add the next staff. So now they're adding staff. Is there a natural opportunity to either add a day or hours at any of these sites? So as a follow-on project, I would be interested in looking at that.
Yeah, I can definitely put something together to explore a couple of options and what the staffing implications are.
And it's, you know, truly just-
It's always a puzzle getting a 40-hour work week to fit with people with the natural operations here. So if you're familiar with the game Tetris, I kind of equate it to that.
Yep, understood. But, you know, with volume, you know, solid waste volumes too, I mean, we may, it just may be a natural fit to expand if that's the key, especially with construction happening. You know, it's going to be happening, you know, all year this year. It's not going to slow down other than weather events. The market's going to push for construction demolition waste for a while, it looks like.
I've been in this business a long time, and I've always considered what's happening at a landfill to be the leading economic indicator for an area. And we're certainly seeing boom business out here.
Yep. Great. So this is preparation for a resolution upcoming. And yeah, good discussion.
Commissioners, we would typically-
I wanted to talk about the second factor here. So the first one was for adding two FTEs to deal with our temporary labor situation. The second one is to add an FTE to deal with a challenge we now have with complying with the viewer labor industry on rest periods. At our transfer stations, the attendants typically are able to get their mandatory rest periods just in breaks in traffic. And at Nigus, we have one attendant who works in the booth, and Republic Services provides all the operational assistance outside of the booth for managing traffic and dealing with the cleanup and things like that. Nigus has grown to the point that attendant is at the window the entire time the site is open. He barely has opportunity to get a restroom break during the day. And to be able to give him that mandatory break, we took a look at four options, and one of them was closing the site for 15 minutes twice a day. That probably would not be received well by the public, so that was dropped off consideration fairly quickly. We did talk with Republic Services about asking if they had any interest in coming into the booth and doing cash handling operations for us for two periods during the day. Department policy has always been that cash handling is done by county staff or attempts that work for us. And Republic was pretty lukewarm to that option there, and feel like we should honor that with them. Right now, what we're doing, if we have some other service needs up at Nigus, we're trying to create situations so we will have an attendant go up there, drive up there during the day and facilitate those two breaks while they do other tasks. We have some heavy equipment work the operator can provide up there. We're also doing some training with other employees, so we're having two people temporarily at Nigus to be able to facilitate that break. Doing that on a sustained level is really not viable. During normal situations, we would have to take one of our attendants off the floor at the transfer station, Not Landfill. And we have two attendants that are staffed on the floor, and they provide integral safety for the public as they come and go out of that building. If you've used the facility, I'm sure you've seen how busy it can get, and we really need to have all eyes on the floor at all times. So pulling an attendant off to run up to Nigus to give that employee a break just is not a sustained thing for us to do. So ultimately, in the end, we came up with the concept of adding an FTE up there, so there'd be two attendants staffed at the site. They can facilitate their breaks. There's ample other things for that person to do during the day. And when it gets busy, we have a system where we can have the two attendants work together to be able to move the traffic through the scale, through the booth fairly quickly. And there's always maintenance customer service needs up there, so we can definitely keep the two staff up there busy if we go with a second FTE up there.
So we think this is the second part of this ask, and yeah, I mean, I saw that in the memo also, and I'm supportive.
Yeah, a growing community needs growing services. Looking at your, looking at your numbers of volume of waste and visitation, it's clear that these are necessary, this is a necessary addition of capacity.
And the one last point to make, we are in the process of designing solid or not for Nigus Transfer Station, and ultimately, that will be a two-attendant operation anyway. So the situation we're in right now would be somewhat short-term. The next year and a half, two years, we'd roll into a scaling operation there. Regarding Southwest, Southwest is next on the list after we finish things at Nigus. So there'll be substantial changes coming to both of those sites over the years.
Great, thank you. Tom?
I was just going to point out, Commissioners, we would likely put this on consent next Wednesday. So if you're thinking this will be additional discussion, we weren't really planning on it, we certainly can if you'd like to. But if you are supportive, if you could so indicate today, then we'll just put it on consent for next week.
Is there support for consent agenda?
Of course.
There we go, okay.
Are we doing any fire free in the fall? Did we just flip it all to the spring? Are we doing any fire free this fall?
You know, in the fall, Republic Services does a half-off at the recycling center at Not Landfill. So there's not a formal fire free where we're taking material in at no charge like we do in the springtime. But to provide some level of service there, what they've done is reduce the cost for yard debris to $2.00 a cubic yard during a period of time in the fall.
Okay, don't save your yard debris now, though. That's really not a good idea.
Yeah, I don't think they use the term "fire free" in the, they call it a "fall half-off sale." I think that's the way they present it.
Great. And I'm looking for a little bit of, yeah, fuel reduction around my house this fall. It's just, we do have space to be able to burn, so I have ideas about what I'll be doing when the weather changes. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you.
So at this time, I'd like to back up a little bit, the citizen input. Was there anybody on Zoom possibly that was there? I didn't ask today, I usually do. There could be somebody else that was, possible raise hand feature. Okay, thank you very much. I just did not ask. And then also, we do have emails, so this is just for the record, emails. We're all getting to the citizen input line. There's 12 items about mask mandates, and there, some are asking for us to support the governor's mandate itself, and then other people are asking for medical freedom and personal choice. So we're seeing that from both sides of the issue there. And then also homeless camps. We have three items from folks. These are emails to us on homeless camps in the community. So those are the topics. Those will be part of the record. We are able to review each one of these as they come in. So thank you for that. I do apologize for not completing our citizen input agenda item. So at this time, item number two, House Bill 3295, Marijuana Tax Revenue Cannabis Advisory Committee. Thank you for joining us.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, Peter Gatawski, Planning Manager. I am mindful that at 9:30, you have your COVID update, so please know if the timing is right, I'm certainly more than willing to have this issue set aside after the COVID presentation. So this agenda item follows-
Let's just take a moment and talk about timing then. So what time did you want to be at a?
I need to head out of the building here at about 10:45.
Okay, I think we're going to be fine. So even if we go a little past 9:30 for the start of the COVID, we'll be fine. So we'll be able to do this.
Great, I'll try to keep us on schedule. So this item follows a discussion that the Board of County Commissioners had on July 14th, where they expressed interest and support to convene a cannabis advisory panel as authorized under House Bill 3295. The memorandum that's included in the board's packet today identifies five items for your consideration and discussion. The first is to discuss the consideration of a cannabis advisory panel. The second item that requires a conversation is determining who, within the county or county departments, you want to convene this panel on a quarterly basis. Last week, a separate conversation regarding the Planning Division's work plan, there was a conversation or discussion by the board suggesting support for county administration to undertake this responsibility, recognizing that land use and development really aren't the focal points of this panel as it's stipulated in House Bill 3295. So nonetheless, that's a conversation topic. The third is the consideration of, well, confirming the representation that the board wants on a project management team that would interface regularly with the panel. So I listed requisite departments and their responsibilities and their expertise. The fourth item is whether or not the board is interested in outside facilitation. As noted in the memorandum, a few years ago, during the convening of a marijuana advisory committee, the board chose to hire an outside facilitator for approximately six meetings. And then lastly, just to begin the discussion for your consideration, as I drafted a charter for the panel that frames, you know, its mission and its priority. So if it's helpful, we could go through each item, and I could provide, starting with the consideration of appointments, I could discuss, you know, who has submitted their interest, again, per the board direction to staff about identifying potential participants, if that's helpful. But I do want to pause, Mr. Chairman, if you would like to tackle these five items in a different order.
Sure, a couple thoughts. I don't know, let's get to the first meeting, is my thought, as in, you know, we're talking about possibly outside facilitator or administration opposed to community development, but my thought is let's get to the first meeting and see what kind of, you know, unstated issues that are out there. As in, you know, if we have a couple folks from the industry, and we definitely have a public announcement about this meeting, I really don't have a feel for which direction this is going to go and how many, you know, kind of to-do items are going to pop up out of this. If it's an advisory committee, I hope it's a very robust community conversation about the, you know, the industry and the impacts and the land use and the dollars created. But I, you know, on one hand, I don't know that there's a whole lot of direct conflict out here. On the other hand, yeah, there may be stuff brought up there that could make it real interesting for a long time to come. So I don't know which way it's going to go.
Yeah, there's, I mean, I believe that the opt-out valid measure, plus some of the decisions that we'll be making in the, you know, very near future, will settle a lot of the questions about time and place and manner, but there sure may still be a lot of feeling in the community about these issues. So it's, you know, even though on a, at the surface level, it seems like there's not, you know, there's not a lot of time, place, manner questions for this panel to discuss, people may still want to talk about it.
Well, as I say, and it'll be interesting to see how, you know, as topics get defined, you know, just the conversation around the table, which ones are those intractable? Because, you know, we've seen it, you know, there's an industry, and there's kind of a, you know, land use and generational issue about it, that there's just not a lot of common ground, but I don't know that that's a direct conflict anymore, or it's just people's opinions that are not common. So it'll be interesting to see how this goes.
Yeah, and I mean, a lot of those, a lot of those questions, a lot of that feeling and that tension, it may just not be within the scope of this panel to discuss. And, you know, people may, you know, at the point where people can accept that, then the business of the panel is quite focused and quite narrow. And, you know, I don't see anything on this list that I think should take a huge amount of time, but, you know, whether it's part of the scope of the panel or not, people still may want to talk about things that, you know, or get, you know, clear the air, get things off their chest and that kind of stuff.
Well, as the only commissioner that did attend the bust, the drug bust the other day with a hemp field with marijuana planted next to it, considerable amounts growing with water being used illegally, of course. I, you know, knowing how water is such at a premium this year and seeing what happened there, I just want to thank our code enforcement people for being so diligent in just doing their job in our community and knowing that the cartels are working maybe here and elsewhere in the state. And definitely, that's something we don't want to happen in Dushuts. And I was really happy to see that Liz Lotychinsky had reached out to your office, Peter. She's a local Realtor, she lives in Tamalo, and she's well aware of both sides of the issue. So I was happy to see her name. So, thank you, Liz, for calling.
Well, so, I mean, I'm supportive of the order here, so talk about appointment process and the seats themselves. So there's some names on here already.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Chairman, and for anybody listening remotely or listening online, on the 14th, the board directed staff to reach out to the Cascade, there's a Cascade Cannabis Association, reach out to the economic, excuse me, reach out to the Chamber of Commerce. I should back up. In the bill of House Bill 3295, it explicitly designates certain representatives to participate on the panel. And so the Board of County Commissioners directed staff to reach out to certain organizations to see if we could find representation. So for the marijuana producer or processor, I was able to identify Hunter Newbauer, who was the, one of the owners of OraGrown, and is an active, his company actively grows marijuana in Dushuts County. Concerning the representation for the marijuana retail representatives, Dushuts County has two retail dispensaries in rural Dushuts County. And so I reached out to both of them, and both of them expressed interest in participating. So you're not limited to one member, you can, as I read the bill, you can certainly go beyond the minimum requirements, but I wanted to let you know that both members, both representatives of those retail operations expressed interest. I did reach out to the Dushuts County Sheriff's Office, and Dustin Miller graciously followed up and said he would be willing to represent the sheriff's office on the panel. There's two items that the board will eventually have to think about, is of course, someone from the county commission or a commissioner or a designee, a member of the public. And as Commissioner Dare noted, just organically, just following this topic, Liz Lotychinsky did reach out to us, taking her own initiative, to let us- her own initiative, to let us know, or to let you know, that she's interested in, in, in that, that opportunity. And then, there's a representative from the Oregon Water Resources Department, Kyle Gorman, who's the Regional Manager, and Central Oregon for the Oregon Water Resources Department agreed to participate. And then, I coordinated with the Chamber of Commerce, who then coordinated with the Economic Development of Central Oregon, also known as EDCO. And they gave me some representatives with a business background. And Gary Braceland reached out and said he's very interested in participating. So, those are for your consideration. Staff's certainly not asking you to, to appoint at this present time. I just wanted to, to return to you in a timely fashion to bring back these names and, and those that have expressed interest.
So, are we, yeah. So, now, now I'm thinking about timing and how far we're going to go here today. As I say, let's jump to the next few items because I think we can get some good direction to this pretty quick. And then, we'll figure out what the to-do items are after that.
Great. As, as I led off in the introduction, the Board, it would be helpful for staff to determine who you would like to convene the panel on a quarterly basis. I, the third item is the, the issues associated with project management, a project management, excuse me, a project management team and facilitation. And then, again, for your, for your consideration, no, no urgency to, to acknowledge the charter, but I, there's one included in your packet for consideration. So, there's still ample time to coordinate with the Board to resolve these issues. And if it's easier, staff can come back at a, at a subsequent date to follow up on this. Again, being mindful of, of the next agenda topic.
Is there an optimal time to have a meeting in, in the, kind of the cycle of tax revenue? Do you know? Have anybody thought through that?
I would-
If we do it quarterly and we don't, and we miss a quarter window, are we, you know, slipping past some revenue or something?
Commissioners, when we were receiving the tax, it came quarterly. So, it's spread out. And I don't know that they've changed that cycle. We're asked to provide some certification to the state each quarter and then the tax revenue flows from there.
So, when we have our first meeting, we'll be able to provide certification that we followed the rules of this bill, which would empower us to receive a share?
Well, the certification is separate from, from the meeting, but, but the timing is roughly the same. And I honestly, I'm, I'm, I don't recall in the bill, maybe Peter does, when the tax revenue is expected to resume. It was not retroactive. It was, I believe, a time, this time forward. But whether that was July 1st or January 1st, I don't, I don't recall.
When we have this meeting, probably.
I know we, we're having our meeting in October so that we don't miss a deadline. We're ahead of the game. That was part of what we were doing. So, hopefully, it was going to start next year.
Yeah, I just got that specific. Okay. So, so for, for the convener, item number two, real quick, you know, let's get to that first meeting and also review it right after that meeting, is my thought. So, if, you know, community development is already kind of on the path of proceeding, because, I mean, it's a good idea to think, maybe this isn't a land use-driven, you know, process like the Planning Commission or some of the other efforts. But that could get us to the first meeting at this point in time. And then, we can review it as part of the meeting even. So, I mean, that gives us clarity to proceed for the first meeting at least.
I think the rest of those items are just for your consideration.
Yeah.
The, to the extent that you wanted, I mean, as you expressed, Mr. Chairman, you, you are, you can use the first meeting to gauge whether or not, you know, you mentioned the convener. You can, you can determine kind of what the tenor and the topics of conversation are during that meeting. And afterwards, of course, we'll, we'll debrief. And the same could be true for the facilitation piece. You can, you know, there's a Commissioner represented. So, obviously, there'll be someone from the Community Development Department. There'll be a project management team with diverse backgrounds on the topic of marijuana. And so, again, that sounds like that might be a more timely conversation after you gauge kind of the, again, the, the outcome of the first meeting.
Yep.
And so, just in the interest of time, again, for this morning, staff can come back in September. That's agreeable, I guess, in coordination with legal to the extent that's necessary for a formal appointment. And, and then the draft charter can, you know, you can offer some additional remarks. I guess the one thing to leave you with, to think about, is if you want to go through a, a public recruitment for a participa-, for a participant from the public. I'm not at all trying to dismiss Ms. Lotychinsky's interests. But it's, it's really, the discretion is up to the Board whether or not you would, you would like to acknowledge that initiative or if you want to go through some kind of formal recruitment process to then go through interested candidates. But that's just, again, that's something that we could revisit in, in early September.
We might be able to make a decision on that now. Any thoughts on that, Commissioner? Like a public process for that public seat or?
Well, if it is a public seat, it is better to have a public process.
Yeah. So, so a notification to the community that, about what's going on, kind of a, an ask for an application?
Yeah. And we could even, within, within that, that, you know, public solicitation, we could, we could specify what kind of perspect-, uh, not perspectives. Um, yeah, I mean, what kind of perspective, what kind of perspectives someone, someone can, we'd like someone to be able to represent.
Probably the only thing is not living in cities, maybe, is the only kind of thing I'm thinking of, which kind of goes back to land use. But that is the domain that we're talking about.
But, but we definitely want someone who, I, I think we'd, we'd want someone who's, you know, you know, maybe, maybe seen some of the, you know, conflicts and tension in the community in the past and has kind of a proactive outlook on, on, you know, kind of how we get past those things. And, you know, someone, someone who can help us, you know, someone who can help us turn the page and find, and, you know, I, this kind of goes back to one of the pieces that, that Peter prepared for us here was this charter. And it has a, a section for mission and purpose. And, and I feel like this mission and purpose component here talked about the functions. Like, this is what the, you know, this, this is the role, this, this, these are the functions of the, of the panel. But it didn't, wasn't really a mission statement necessarily. And in my mind, the, you know, the mission statement is about two things. It's about, you know, supporting the legal production and sale of cannabis while preventing and mitigating potential negative impacts, especially from, you know, black market production and, and sale and, and use of, of these products. So, I, I mean, I, I do think we want to lay out a clear mission. I, you know, and, you know, when you convene a group like this, you could let them spend a whole bunch of time, you know, constructing a mission statement. Or you could, you could give them a draft and, and say, here's what we think should be in here. And then, they could, they could tweak and, and refine it. But, but I guess putting out a solicitation for a public participant gives you the opportunity to sort of say, you know, this is, you know, this is what we want this panel to do. And then, people can self-identify whether they support that mission and, and you'll want to be part of that or not.
So, that kind of reminds me, I'd like to talk to Representative Crop on this also and then understand what, you know, what we have been handed. That, because I still don't, I mean, I basically don't support it, but I don't understand it either. So, you know, here, you can have this tax revenue if you do this. And so, I don't understand what that if is expecting. You know, I mean, there's what's written down the page. But, you know, I mean, we've been through it quite a bit here. So, yeah, let's work on that, though. So, yeah, what, you know, as a Board of Commissioners, what are we expecting out of this? So, that's, that, I'm, I'm fine with coming up with some words for mission and purpose on that.
Well, I happen to appreciate item number two, increases in public safety measures. So, thank you for that wording. I think it's really important. And the fact that Dustin Miller had said he would be a, would be happy to step up for this group is, I think, really important, just to have the balance. So.
Yeah. And those, that one, two, and three, I'm not saying that that shouldn't be in the charter. I'm just saying it's not the mission, it's the, the function or the, the role of the, the group.
And Commissioners, just, just for context, too, those three items, those recommendations come straight out of the bill.
Yeah, great. Well, so, what about having a representative at the first meeting, too, possibly? Because, you know, he could explain, you know, the, the context of how we got here.
Yeah. We could, we could invite both of the sponsors. Crop Van Zieke.
Yep. Okay. So, the to-do item will be to do the appointments officially. So, we're not doing that yet. These are proposed names on, in the table. And we'll be, there is support for going out to a member of the public and with a public announcement.
Great. I'll work with Whitney, our Communications Director, to, to do a timely announcement for that opportunity. And staff will return early next month. Again, with maybe an update to the revision to the charter for reflecting today's conversation. And we'll coordinate with legal to the, to the extent it's necessary for consideration. Well, I guess we'll wait for the consideration of appointments until we have the representative, the expressed interest by members of the public. So, we'll, we'll check in in September with ample time for, to ensure that we have a meeting in October that meets the Board's expectations. Great.
So, then also for the first meeting, I'm envisioning that possibly all three of us may be interested in attending the first meeting. Because, I mean, that's the day that, you know, we find out what, what's, what hasn't been said or what can be shared. So, I don't mind, you know, if there's one person designated to be part of the committee and then, you know, the other Commissioner, you know, myself in the room. So, I, I mean, I don't need to be at the table is what I'm offering. But, yeah. So, we'll see where that goes. I just, I guess that's my opinion on that.
Do we have a date for that first meeting?
It is, the only input that we've received to date from the Board is a, a, a date and time for an evening meeting in October. So, again, when we return in, in a month's time, we can lay out and we can work on your schedule. Of course, it'll be a public meeting with a quorum of the Commissioners in attendance. So, we'll, we'll come back with some recommendations for your consideration.
Great.
Excellent.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Moving it forward. And this is a public document, too, so people can see what we're doing here. Thank you. At this time, item number three, COVID-19 update. Thank you very much for joining us. We have a slide deck for today. Yesterday, I was able to observe and participate in case investigation work that's done by our staff here in the counties. There's a great group of people, you know, making that initial call for case investigations. And then, contact tracing is the follow-on to that also. So, I'm, I'm more informed about what happens on the ground there. At this time, we'll get the, the presentation going, I guess. And Dr. Fawcett is going to be joining us also.
Good morning. So, we apparently don't have the slides here. Emily, would you mind pulling them up and sharing them?
Sharon just might have them also. I don't know.
Sharon has the PDFs, but apparently they haven't been loaded in the system here.
There we go. Look at that.
Okay, great. Thanks. Good morning, Commissioners. Just to matter of record, I'm George Conway, Health Services Director.
I'm Nahat, good morning. I'm Nahat Sadra, the Director of Public Health for Health Services.
And I have a substitution. That's why I had to run out. Crystal Sully is, is not able to be at work today. So, Emily Freeland, who, as you all know, is our COVID-19 Response and Recovery Supervisor currently, will join us instead. Dr. Michael Johnson from St. Charles will be presenting about the, the status of the hospital and how full it is. And then, Dr. Fawcett will give an update on therapeutics per Commissioner Dare's request. Next slide, please. So, well, this is interesting. Let's see if, let's see if the Epi-curve is the next slide. Hmm. We don't have the Epi-curve. So, maybe, Emily, would you mind trying to switch to the, the shared drive version? I don't know why the Epi-curve isn't, which is the most important thing actually in this, isn't in the PDF.
Looks like this is the same version we have printed for us with these slides.
Yeah. Well, we had, we had a lot of people working on this last night to get it current. Emily, can you hear me?
Just go down to the next slide.
Well, so, any-
I'll, I'll look for it if you want to keep going. I'll, I'll try to find it real quick.
So, I'll, I'll describe that. So, we, we had a rough doubling of cases this last week of almost 800, 794, I believe. So, that's by far the highest number of cases that we've had. And that's, we believe, entirely attributable to the Delta variant. This, what you see now is that, so we'll come back to the Epi-curve in a minute when we get, when we get it up. What you see now is the testing results by week. And we're up to about 13%, which is also the highest we've ever seen. We have had a substantial uptick in testing as well, which means that there are people that are concerned about their, their status. Next slide, please.
It's not going, is it? Is it moving or no?
So, we're on the-
Well, the, yeah, yeah, okay. So, this is the hospitalizations. And I won't say much about this because Dr. Johnson will be joining us. You can see that we're also at an all-time high for hospitalizations as of yesterday or the evening before. There were 58 persons in St. Charles' system with COVID. Next slide, please. So, Emily, why don't we do, we'll do this and the next two slides. And then, I'm going to, I'm going to do a little show and tell. So, it'll be a good time to switch decks.
Okay. Awesome. Sorry, my computer is freaking out.
Sorry. I have to take responsibility. I'm the one that sent the, the PDF and I must have, I must have used the wrong version since there were a number in play. So, the Delta variant is distinctive in that it colonizes the nose, mouth, and throat at a much higher rate than the other variants that we've had. As a result, a sneeze or a cough is much more contagious, whether it's direct or if it's just feeding as an aerosol into the air. And it's that primary characteristic that we believe is making it much more contagious. Mercifully, as it progresses in the body, it doesn't appear to be more likely to cause per person serious illness or death, mercifully. The other thing that's good is that the vaccines that we have are all protective against serious illness and death, against this strain. So, we're fortunate that the strain isn't, isn't avoiding the body's defenses. But it does replicate at such a rate that we're going back to this extraordinary measure of asking people to be masked when they're around other people again. Next slide, please. So, this is a, this is a, one of the first things that let us know that COVID was readily spread as an aerosol and could travel quite a way. This is an MMWR from about, over a year ago now. Is this one from Skagit County, Washington? Do you know?
Yes.
I think it is, but I'm not sure. Anyhow, this is a choir. And you can see that the person in red at the upper left had COVID. Didn't know it at the time, but had COVID. And it turned out that, and of course, it's singing where people, you know, project their voice. And there's quite a bit of music, of mucus that flies in the air, particles. All but the sort of far, a little bit more than half of the front row were infected with COVID. So, we know that this is a virus that even this is just sort of the normal COVID a year ago that could travel- ago that could travel well. Next slide.
So, Dr. Conway, that visual there, that is what the actual layout of people in the church was? That's not just kind of the numbers?
No, that's my understanding is it's the actual... It was the layout of the church.
The person was sitting in the far back corner and...
I'd have to verify that. I know they were sitting in the back and I know that the only people spared were people in the front. Whether or not this is a schematic of that or not, I don't know.
George, we put the slide... Sorry about that. Go ahead.
We have some little artifact here, a security artifact if we can maybe get rid of that.
This is the Epi, yeah.
Let's see if I... I may be able to get rid of that.
Yeah, you can do that.
There we go. So this is the Epi-curve. And as you can see, we had 793 cases for the last week, which is more than doubling in the prior week. And so this is the type of epidemic curve that makes epidemiologists really worried. So we're actually in an accelerating picture. So the likelihood that this is just going to suddenly fall off this week or next is quite low. We hope that some of the measures that are being taken will help blunt this, but it will take some time. Hence the great concern about the hospital. So I've already talked about testing. Mercifully, there is more testing going on, but the 13% positive is very, very high and reflects a higher level of presence of virus in the community. And I should point out that we got the latest wastewater signal results last night from OHSU. Do like to make a slide out of, but they're showing a very strong signal for COVID in both the influenza in Bend as well as in Redmond. Redmond had been sort of lagging in June. And both of those influenza have had almost entirely Delta for the last three or four samples as well. So this hospitalizations I already mentioned, I think it was up to 58 yesterday or the evening prior. As I mentioned, Delta variant, very transmissible. This is the choir. Once again, I don't know if this is schematic or not, but I know that it was just the people in the very front that were spared. So this is an intervention. It's a retrospective, prospective evaluation of an intervention. So basically, there were two hairstylists that had COVID, were not aware of it. And during the course of the shift, before they were tested or became ill, they attended to 139 clients. It must have been more than one shift. Anyhow, and they were wearing masks and none of the clients were infected. So this is a good piece of evidence for the effectiveness of masks. Speaking of masks, we've done this before, but I thought I'd just do a little show and tell about the sort of continuum of masks. So...
Oh, Dr. Conway, I do have a question. I think you said, is it 56 or 58 today in the hospital? Because I know there were 56.
I didn't say anything about today. Dr. Johnson will be talking about the...
Okay. Nahad, do we know how many of those are Deschutes County? I don't know if Dr. Johnson will have it.
As of yesterday, there were 40 or so that were Deschutes County.
Yesterday was 44 Deschutes?
Forty or so. It's approximately... I remember seeing 40. I don't know if that was yesterday morning or morning before. But I'm sure Dr. Johnson can tell us that. Can I proceed?
Sure.
So there's a continuum of masks and we've all gotten very good at this throughout most of the world, certainly in America, from the requirements that have come intermittently. So the most basic face covering, such as a bandana or a... I don't remember what they're called, a sort of tube-type scarf, are deemed ineffective. So it's better not to use those at all. A single-layer cloth mask in general would not be enough. You can have a layered cloth mask, and as long as you don't see any pinpoints of light through it, it can be a little translucent. And that's probably the minimum thing that would be protective. And it's good if you have a cloth one. This happens to be a CDC one that one of my kids gave me. If it's a cloth one, it should still have the nose bridge thing so it adheres, conforms to the shape of your face. The next sort of level up is the... These are ubiquitous now, very inexpensive, KN95, which is the Chinese equivalent to the N95 certification in the United States. There were many of these that came in the country that actually did not... So NIH and CDC did do some cross authorization for the use of these, but there were many of them that came in the U.S. that actually didn't meet that standard. However, even those ones are multi-layered and they're relatively absorbent and they're fairly face-conforming. So they're a reasonable proxy for this kind of mask and probably about the same effectiveness as this one, which is the most ubiquitous, which is what we call a surgical or procedure mask. And then this is an N95. So let me just talk about the surgical and procedure mask and these others first, and I'll talk about the N95. So the main thing that we're trying to do is contain a sneeze or a cough or mucus spray if you're singing or talking loudly. So we want these things to be absorbent and we want them to be able to entrain both the force and the bulk of any mucus that you... Sorry if this is disgusting, but any mucus you might spew out in the course of any of those things. So that's the reason that a bandana or a single piece of cloth isn't adequate. The one that's become more or less ubiquitous is this surgical or procedure mask. And the reason for that is that was the purpose these were designed for. Operating-room staff, physicians, nurses, anytime you're doing a procedure, you would wear one of these. And this was designed specifically to contain spray. It doesn't protect the wearer, but it protects the people around you. And in this case, it was designed primarily to protect the operative field or your patient. So all of these that I've just talked about are very good for protecting others from you. And that's what the whole point of the ask right now is because we know that there's been breakthrough of been... I'll talk about that in a moment. Breakthrough of... We'll talk about that in a moment. Of infections to people that are fully immunized, but with the Delta variant, mercifully, most of those do not become ill. And we know that there's a lot of infection afoot. So basically, we're asking that anytime you're around other people, that you wear masks. And I really appreciate your demonstrating this publicly, Commissioners, so I think it's very helpful. Now, N95 mask is more of a special purpose because it's designed to protect the wearer from even very tiny particles, whether they're air pollution or viruses. So these are supposed to be what we call fit-tested, but it's hard to line everybody up to do that. So the other option is what's called seal-tested, where you put it on your face and then just check without the straps around, see if you inhale, if it adheres close enough to your face. These should be used by anyone that's caring for someone that may have COVID. So if you're a personal attendant at home, if you're caring for a family member that you're not living with all the time, that would be good. But we don't want to use these exclusively because they still are in short supply in some places. And it's probably a little more than is needed. And actually, these tend to muffle speech a little more because they have a more robust membrane in the middle. So these are for... To protect the wearer from a potential exposure. And all the others are to protect everybody else from us.
George?
Yes.
N95 is also good during smoke, maybe?
Yes, yeah, yeah. The N95, yeah, I kind of mentioned that, but maybe I didn't. So the small particles, most of the small particles for smoke, not the ultra fines, but the small ones, what we call PM 2.5, which is what the AQI is based on that we're looking at. Most of those are at least 95% excluded by this as well. And that's actually another sort of ambiguity that because these are dual-purpose, they protect the wearer from both. We do anticipate there'll be high demand. There's better resupply than there was. But I think that this... I don't think there's anything wrong with using these to protect others, but it's probably a little bit overshoot, like a lot of the people, the young guys with the big trucks with the big tires that sell them go in the most. So Emily, over to you.
Well, so for clarity real quick...
Shall I drive? I guess I should drive since it's in my domain now.
So for clarity real quick on this slide, there's two hairstylists and 139 clients. They were probably wearing all kinds of versions of masks and one of them might have been a bandana or a couple of them might have been. But this is... I mean, you've got to assume... I would assume that. That's my assumption. So any masking works effectively in this situation, though?
I understood that the stylists were both wearing masks. I don't know the percentage of the clients that were wearing them.
No, it says everyone wore face coverings on the top line. Everyone worn.
Okay, good. Thank you. Can we go on? Emily?
So, oh, there we go. So our next slide is just going over this typical, what we talk about with the number of vaccinations we have in our county. So we're in this dark blue color here, which indicates over 70% vaccinated and we're about 73% of our 18 and up. So it's important to know that this is not of even the whole 12 and up that are able to take the vaccine, but it's 18 and up. So our adult population, 73%, are vaccinated. So that is about 6,110 per 10,000 total population. And this is both people that are in series and fully vaccinated. So if you've just had your vaccine this week, even if it's only your first dose, you would be counted here. Next slide, please.
Emily, do you know if that includes the veterans' numbers that were given through the VA? Have those numbers been incorporated?
Actually, OHA does not current... The only vaccination pathway that is not included in OHA's currently is the VA.
So the VA, numbers aren't in here?
We're in the process of trying to reconcile the VA local records with the local records, but it's quite complicated because the same fields aren't gathered. I did have the local VA Facility Director is on our test and vax workroom. We had a recent discussion about that. It would barely shift these numbers. I think the salient point at the end of this is that this means that basically about 61% of our population is vaccinated because the statistic above is the...
Yeah, I can add that in my figures that you'll see later, I've added in those federal numbers and they are just miniscule compared to the rest. So I'm sure that it wouldn't change it more than half a percent at most.
So, Michael, the federal supply chain to the pharmacies is included in OHA's alert system, but the VA isn't. So what you did include...
I've included those as well as the VA one. I mean, I've gotten some outside sources that have provided those numbers to me and they're just very, very small and haven't changed much in the past month.
I should introduce that the voice that we're hearing is Dr. Michael Johnson, who's a senior scientist for St. Charles, and he'll be presenting after this. So Emily, shall I move on?
So this goes into our vaccination by age group. You can see that at the higher age groups, we have a much higher percentage of people that are vaccinated, upwards of 100% of the 70 to 79-year-olds, and that drops off significantly with our lower-aged groups. So we really are trying to focus on making sure that these lower-age groups that may feel like they would have less of a health impact by getting COVID are also aware that they should be getting the vaccination. Next slide, please.
Emily, I'm going to go back just to clarify something. So in this slide, the 61% is still of persons that are eligible for vaccination, so it doesn't include the young children. Emily, here it is, the vaccination options.
Yep. So as all of us probably know, there are lots and lots of options for getting vaccinated in Deschutes County. Pharmacies, primary care offices and doctors, as well as the pop-up clinics that we're providing with our staff, we're trying to very target those in places where we feel like the other options are not sufficient in those communities or certain specific populations that we're trying to target. So there's lots of different options in our community to get vaccinated. Next slide, please. So there are typical barriers to vaccination that we are trying to address. The first one is cost. So this vaccine, as most people know, there's no cost for the vaccine or administration of this at our pop-ups or other places. We hope to have minimal wait time so people can get in and out. They don't need an appointment. You can just stop in and get your vaccine as quickly as possible. And then the third piece is education. So we want to make sure that people are comfortable, they can ask questions, even if you're not maybe going to get the vaccine today, but you do want to talk to somebody about it directly and ask your questions to an educator. We all have healthcare workers and they can provide education to the public of these. So even if people aren't sure or you're on the fence, we would encourage you to go to one of these clinics and you can ask those questions and get more information if that's something that would make you feel more comfortable. Next slide, please.
Emily, do we have any sense of what percentage of workers in our community have the ability to take time off from work, paid time off from work to get vaccinated and then kind of recover from, you know, any effects that they feel the next day from getting their vaccination shot?
So I would hesitate to guess on a percentage of that. From having lots of conversations with people, I think that most employers are encouraging people to get the vaccine on off time. However, there are federal programs that we would encourage employers to take advantage of, where you can get a tax credit for offering and allowing your employees to take sick time for both vaccination, the actual appointment or whatever it takes to get someone vaccinated, as well as any after-effects or side-effects from the vaccine, which would preclude someone from going to work. So, you know, I don't know what the percentage of people in our community that have that available to them is. I think it probably varies widely based on the type of job that you have. But again, we would really encourage anyone who's not offering that to their employees to look into that federal program. It is a pretty straightforward tax credit to allow your employees to take that time and get vaccinated.
And that is widely available to employers. I guess one of the places my thoughts go is if employers are not providing this, you know, this flexibility, this opportunity to their workers, is, you know, what can we do to encourage that? If there's... If these tax credits are widely available and they're fairly easy to apply for, that's one thing. But if they're not, then I was just wondering if we might be able to use some of the American Rescue Plan dollars to, you know, to support employers doing that in our community.
Yes, I would agree with you. We have thought about that a lot. I would say that our employers that we speak with a lot are overstressed by just the nature of the employment market at this point. So that's something that they have talked to us pretty strongly about. And we are trying to support them in any way we can. And one of the ways is like these off-hours, weekends, trying to make vaccine accessible at times when employees aren't at work, but also making sure that they're aware that really it is an investment for their workforce. So if you encourage vaccination in your workforce, in whatever way you can do that, so, you know, we will help support you doing that in whatever way we can. It really is an investment because when you do have an exposure or people come into the workplace and bring COVID with them, if you have more of your population vaccinated, there's less people that are required to quarantine and it will affect your business and the bottom line more in the end. So we certainly are trying to educate on that. So we certainly are trying to educate on that in all of our touchpoints and through, you know, our various partnerships with chambers and different organizations in the community to make sure that employers are aware of the programs that are available, as well as letting us know how we might be able to help them make vaccine more accessible to their employees.
Emily, do we happen to have the numbers from the clinic on Saturday? I was talking to a couple of people that had received the vaccination there. They had gotten Moderna and I believe Mayo Clinic had come up with some analysis of the effectiveness of the Moderna vaccine, that it was quite good in comparison. And I'm just wondering, do we know how many people actually came to that clinic in total on Saturday?
So I don't have those specific numbers in front of me right now. I can get them. I do have a summary slide that's next. I think Crystal was planning on adding some, but she wasn't feeling well today with some specific numbers. But the next slide does kind of go over our, you know, what percentage we're doing as far as those vaccination numbers directly. I would, can you go back one slide?
Yes.
Yeah, so I would say, you know, we, again, as Dr. Conway has mentioned on several of these meetings, we consider ourselves the provider of last resort. So we're really trying to assess the needs that aren't being met in other ways in the community and address those directly. So these pop-up clinics are intended and we just started last night a pop-up clinic that's evening hours in Bend. So regular scheduled pop-up clinics where people can count on that being there, as well as going to events or other things where we might see a specific demographic that aren't easily accessing vaccines other places. So that's, you know, you can see here that our numbers compared to the total number of vaccinations given are very small, which is intentional, right? We want to utilize our resources for these very specific populations and have most people go to their primary care doctor and at the same time, talk about all other health things that we should be addressing in a community or the pharmacy or somewhere else. So.
Emily?
Yeah.
Just quickly, if I may intervene. Commissioner, you asked about sisters. You mentioned weekend, but I have numbers from Monday, sisters.
No, this was actually at the county fair on Saturday. I believe it was a Latino clinic that was being done at that time.
Okay.
And, you know, I saw a lot of people there and I was really hoping that, because I believe their numbers were lower in the county, relatively speaking, and it was really nice to see that there was an excellent turnout.
Sure.
I understand there was a good turnout and there were a substantial number vaccinated. I'm reluctant to use my memory from what Crystal said, but we can get back to you.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, anyway, I was just really happy to see that and, you know.
Yeah.
So the event was put on by them, I think it was a Mexican consulate event with LCA and it was a two-day event where vaccinations were also offered, if I'm remembering correctly. I think last weekend was the 14th and 15th. And so, like I said, I don't know what those numbers were specifically, but those are the kind of things, exactly like you mentioned, where we're trying to target specific populations in places where they already are going for other services or other, you know, other things where we can make sure that there's vaccinations there as well as part of that, you know, kind of more comprehensive, either health package or comprehensive package of other information and services that are available.
Yeah. And just to put a plug in for following Commissioner Chang's inquiry about facilitating employees to get vaccinated, and this is not a one-to-one ratio, but just to mention that we have tried to come up with incentives as well to perhaps nudge the employers and the employees to get vaccinated. And some of those incentives include, for example, gift cards or Visa cards, which, again, it's not a one-to-one ratio, but it does help somewhat to account for that indirect cost or direct cost.
One other question about these vaccination numbers. Do we have a sense of how many of these are initiations or, you know, first doses versus second doses?
Yeah, I have some numbers in front of me, Emily, if it's helpful. So for example, what I'm, the Excel sheet I'm looking at on 16th of August, Sisters Fire, for example, we had a couple hours providing service there. Of the 38 total administered, 16 were initial doses, which is great. And when I look throughout sort of the chart and what we're offering, generally what I see is roughly between 60, 65% of the doses administered, at least in the last week or so, are initial doses. And that's a really good sign. That's where we get the marginal value, frankly. But of course, we want everyone to get completely vaccinated. Go ahead, Emily.
Okay. Can't see the slide. There we go. Okay. So we also want to make sure that everyone is aware that, you know, no one is trying to work in a silo on these problems or, you know, how to address these issues. We do have these administration work groups that are twice monthly meeting and these are some of our partners that we work with to make sure that, you know, everyone isn't inventing the wheel, so to speak, and working together. One of the things that I would mention, another reason why our clinics are helpful and what we've heard from some of these providers is with administering these vaccines, there's like a 15-minute wait time, as probably most of you have known from going to the mass vaccination clinic where people have to wait, where we can observe them and make sure that there's no adverse effects in that first 15 minutes. So that is very difficult for providers to work into their, you know, normal appointments or a normal system. And so that's another reason why having these other options, like going to the pharmacy or coming to our clinics, is helpful for our providers if they aren't able to work that into their normal, their normal administration kind of daily tasks. So, next slide, please. So we've gotten a lot of questions about, you know, breakthrough cases and this is a slide from this state that kind of shows the case rate in unvaccinated people. You can see there is the orange line and the case rate in vaccinated people is the blue line. So you can see that this surge that we're experiencing right now is largely driven by unvaccinated people. Of course, we do see breakthrough cases, which we have all been expecting since the beginning, right? We know no vaccine is 100% effective. These are very, very effective, but they're, we, the more people we get vaccinated, the more breakthrough cases we're going to expect. And you can see that the surge is largely driven by the unvaccinated population. Next slide, please. So I'm just going to go through these relatively quickly because I think Dr. Johnson is going to be able to go into much more detail about hospitalization and vaccine status here. But you can see over the last several months, March through August, that a substantial portion of those that are hospitalized are the unvaccinated. While we do have some in the hospital that are fully vaccinated, most people that are admitted to the hospital or seen in the hospital are those unvaccinated people. So although we may be seeing breakthrough cases, again, the severity of illness is much less and this is protective in our community. So we want to keep people out of the hospital so that the people that need the hospital care, for any reason, you know, COVID or otherwise, accidents, all the millions of things that people are going to the hospital for all the time, they're able to receive the care at the best quality that we can, we can give them. Next slide, please. This is a similar pattern that we see for the ICU patients, so those very, very sick people. You can see the orange is the number of people in, number of patients in ICU and then the gray bar at the very top is the number of those that were fully vaccinated and in the ICU. So again, a very small number of people. Next slide, please. So as we all know and looking at, you know, what Dr. Conway showed at the beginning with our numbers, our case numbers are extremely high. The community spread is high. So we're back to the place where we were when we would talk about, when you go out in the community, regardless of where you're at, there's a good chance that you should assume that you could be exposed at any place that we go out into the community. Our numbers at this point are about 402 cases per 100,000 and our test positivity rate, again, is really high, 12.7%. So this indicates to us that there is a high level of spread and because we do know that people are able to be asymptomatic spreaders or pre-symptomatic spreaders, that, you know, even if you're around someone and they're feeling fine, there's the potential that in a couple days, they could become sick and they could have already exposed you at that point. So it's really important to practice these preventative measures, you know, wearing our masks, keeping the group sizes small if possible, you know, socializing outdoors. Those events are much, much safer than indoor events and just being smart to help, to help, you know, slow the spread of COVID in our community right now. Next slide, please. So we just wanted to talk a little bit about pregnant women. We have had a lot of questions at our pop-up clinics and otherwise about if they should be vaccinated. So we just want to make sure that people are aware that the vaccine is safe and then shown to have no increase in miscarriage rates or no increase in adverse pregnancy outcomes. So we really certainly want to encourage even pregnant women to go ahead and get the vaccine. Next slide. So like I have mentioned several times and I think we've gone over this, there are tons of different options of where you can go to get vaccines in our community. It's free, there's no insurance required and no ID is required. If you go to centraloregonvaccine.com, all of the options are laid out there pretty well so you can click on any of these boxes and find out more information specifically about all of these different places you can go. Next slide. So these are our walk-in clinics. We have this Monday in Sisters, Tuesday in the Pine at the Chamber of Commerce. We appreciate all of these partnerships that people are allowing us to do. Tuesdays, we are at the Wall Street Services Building from 5:00 to 7:00. Wednesdays, Downtown Library. Thursdays, the Redmond Library. We also have collaborative events with LCA, the Latino Community Association, with some evening and weekend hours. Next slide. So it's your turn now. I think we're all aware that, you know, anybody 12 and up with parental consent for that small age group is able to get the vaccine at this point and it's the best tool that we have to protect our community and our loved ones. Next slide. So we've also been getting lots of questions on booster doses. So recently, the FDA has approved a booster dose of an mRNA vaccine. So this is for people that have specific autoimmune or other disorders, which would require them to have this type of booster dose. So this is not for everyone. We hope that a bunch of people are not coming to our clinics, although some people have been coming and asking for a booster dose, a third dose of an mRNA vaccine. So we want to make sure that people who need it are able to get it, but we want to make sure that the criteria are clear of who is able to receive that booster dose. Next slide, please. Oh, yep.
Go ahead, George.
Go ahead.
I was just going to add that we have written our guideline for doing this. So we are, we are poised to provide this for individuals that are, that do have either post-transplant and taking Imran or another immunosuppressive or an inherent immunopathy. But we're hoping the majority of these individuals will get those through their primary care provider that they probably see frequently with such conditions so that there's also active follow-up. But we are poised to provide this. The other thing is there's a series of discussions going on in the federal government right now about the possibility of a third dose of the mRNA vaccines, likely stratified by age, the priority by age, very similar to the way that we did the initial waves. And that could be implemented as policy as early as September with some of those booster doses given in late September, early October. I have to point out, there's a sort of an ethical dilemma that's also being discussed, which is to fully and then more fully immunize people in one of the world's wealthiest countries while many other nations have very, very low vaccination rates and very high COVID rates is really a very difficult conundrum. I think we'll be hearing more about that, too.
Yeah, the only addition I had, George and Emily, was that just in case local media are listening and anything gets published, technically, this is a third dose for immunocompromised individuals rather than a booster dose. And the idea is that they've had primary failure to the initial doses, so they never really seroconverted. And the third dose will hopefully help them become immunized. So it's a third dose rather than booster per se.
This is relatively common in vaccines that are new to have this sort of revisitation of the antibody production and its durability. So I was actually one of the guinea pigs for the original hepatitis B vaccine, which was derived from human antibodies. And they ended up, I think we ended up having four of them by the time they were satisfied that there was adequate coverage. That doesn't apply anymore because the one that's been in use since the mid-1980s is a recombinant synthetically produced one. But this is not, this is not unusual with vaccines and many of these people we were worried might not have any response. And indeed, a lot of them did have at least a partial response and then it seems to be much more robust with the third. I wouldn't be surprised if we don't end up giving possibly additional supplemental doses for this relatively small percentage of population. I think 2.7% of the US population would so qualify.
So finally, you know, we want to make sure that people are aware that we are here for questions. So you can visit our website, deschutes.org/COVID19vaccine. The vaccine hotline, this hotline is not just for vaccination questions. The hotline staff is also trained in all different kinds of, from contact tracing to case investigation. They have lots of information on COVID in general. So if our community has any questions, they can reach out to the hotline, which is open Monday through Friday from 9:00 to 5:00 and ask those questions and they either can answer them or direct people in the correct place to get their questions answered. So, thank you.
Thanks very much, Emily. Could we unshare so that Dr. Johnson can choose? Michael, you're on.
Thank you very much. Let me share a screen quickly. I don't have too many slides. And kudos to both Dr. Conway and to Emily for two excellent presentations with very good information so far. So some of my slides I'll be skipping over just because I think that they're somewhat redundant. So here is, here's my concern. The number of positive cases has reached an all-time high, as we know. This is a chart showing a seven-day cumulative increase in the number of positive cases. Yesterday it was at 9:44, today it's at 9:14. Previously, we had barely gone over 700 for the, for the high point in our, in our fall surge. Now there's, I don't really think that that little tiny tick at the top is the end of this surge and I say that for several reasons. There's three things that typically in my modeling experience with COVID have shown to have an impact on the shape of this, this chart. One is our vaccinations. Although we've seen a very, very small uptick in the vaccinations, it's basically too little, too late. You know, it's going to be a couple weeks before those new vaccinated individuals, even if it is their second one, will help us to curb this current surge. And secondly, it's, it's just numbers that are very, very small. Another thing that can impact the shape of this curve and start us on the downward trend are policy decisions. Previously, policy decisions to, for lockdowns and mask-wearing seemed to have quite an effect with. effect within a couple of days, five days, five to seven days. I don't think the current mask mandate will have that same effect for many reasons. I, I just don't think it's being embraced like the previous ones and I'm not sure, well, I, I just don't think it's going to have the, the magnitude of the effect that we've seen in the past. The third is, is, is based upon what we call a fear and fatigue cycle. So for instance, when the numbers get really high and the hospitalizations get very high and people hear about that, a fear kicks in and they go, oh, I need to curb my behavior. I need to wear a mask more frequently. I need to avoid indoor groups. And, and on the other end, when, when things are looking very good, they get a little bit tired of, of those behavioral changes and they, they relax them a little bit. And that sine curve is what we call this fear and fatigue cycle. I think people are just very, very tired of the entire 18 months that we've been experiencing the pandemic. And many of the modelers around the state have been saying that the fear and fatigue cycle doesn't have the impact that it has in the past. So basically what I'm saying is I have no reason to believe that we are quite at the top of this surge yet. And until we really start to see three to five days of a downward trend on the seven-day cumulative number of positive cases, we are not going to see any, any change in the number of hospitalized patients. The, the next chart is the corresponding number of hospitalized patients for COVID. And this typically has about a, a week to 10-day lag from the, from the positive cases. So once the positive cases start going down, about a week later, we see the impact for the number of hospitalized, hospitalized patients. Now I do want to point out that I'm saying for the, the count for the most recent day is 61. That's 61 patients that came through the hospital on that day. A lot of times people will see a midnight census number, which is basically a snapshot in time, how many patients were in a bed at midnight. That, that midnight census number was 52 because we had discharged a bunch of patients throughout the day. And of those 52 patients, to answer Commissioner Oder's question earlier, 41 of those were Deschutes County residents.
Thank you.
Yes. So we aren't going to see this come down until we start to see the positive cases come down. We haven't yet seen the positive cases start to come down. It, it doesn't just affect our hospitalized patients, but also our ED visits. These are COVID-related ED visits. And the bar that you see, 247 for August, is only halfway through the month. So they are going to see quite a surge here. And it's not just, these are pediatrics and I define those to be just children 18 years old and younger. The blue line is the hospitalized over the duration of the pandemic. The orange line is the number of ED visits. So even though we did have a blip back there in May and June for hospitalized pediatrics, we, we aren't seeing a ton of them right now, but we are definitely seeing an uptick in the number of ED visits. And again, this is only halfway through the month. So that orange curve is going to continue to trend upward at least through August. This next, next chart is not just COVID patients. These are all patients in the hospital. And, and we've been feeling kind of the downstream effects of COVID for a while now. When you start canceling elective surgeries and only see the sickest patients in our, in our operating rooms and as, as inpatients, they tend to have a longer length of stay because you're only seeing the most sick patients. And so that's primarily why we see an uptick in the average length of stay. But, but you can, you can look at that and it's, and it's increased by over a day. So that's, that is significant and that is adding to our capacity issues. And that's all I really wanted to say about that slide in case there's, unless there's any questions. Now let's talk a little bit about breakthrough cases and Emily did a great job of describing many of the details with regard to breakthrough cases. Now, remember a breakthrough case is defined as somebody who is more than 14 days after their last dose. So two doses of the Pfizer and Moderna or their first dose, only dose of Johnson &amp; Johnson. When you break that down by age group, it is incredibly effective for those who are under 60 years old. And it's, it's still very effective for those who are over 60, but as was mentioned before, the older you are, the more troubled your immune system is and you're a little bit more susceptible to, to having a breakthrough case. But it's still, you know, very, very low in the, in the big scheme of things. So, and another fact that I think is very pertinent to this charge, this chart is our average patient, the age of an average COVID patient since June has been, is 58 years old. So, you know, that, I, I know that it's a little bit skewed from some, some very old patients, but nonetheless, the median is not that far from the mean. So it's not that skewed. So we can have a huge effect on our hospitalized numbers if, with an increased vaccination program for the younger age groups. And if you take a look at it, they're the ones that have the most room for improvement. Now, if you have a very, very good memory, you can remember back to Emily's chart where the numbers weren't exactly the same. Her numbers are accurate and they reflect what OHA is, is reporting. What I have done has, I've in, I've adjusted the population of our Central Oregon counties from the 2020 census with I think a conservative increase of 3.5%. OHA is still using the 2020 census numbers. So our numbers don't exactly agree. Like for instance, I'm saying 95.5% of the 79, 70 to 79 age group have been vaccinated, but OHA will say it's nearly 100%. So it's not that far off, but I am being conservative because these are the numbers that impact our number of hospitalized patients very, very directly. So when you look at this group below 60, they're the ones that we can keep out of the hospital and they're the ones with the most opportunity to improve their vaccination percentages. This is for the entire Central Oregon region. Deschutes County is a little bit better than Jefferson and Crook with regard to the vaccination rates. But, and this is where we're saying that, you know, it's 106% of the 70 to 79. Well, I, I think our population numbers need to be adjusted slightly. That's where my conservative guess of, of 3.5% probably is a little off and it's, and I've applied that across the board for all age groups and I'm not sure that that's a good assumption, but trying to adjust it a little bit.
So it looks like only the 80-plus in Deschutes County is lower than Jefferson County. The rest of the time, we are clearly more vaccinated.
Yes, that is true. And to be honest with you, some of the population, I mean, the denominator in all this is how many people are in that age group that live in the area. There is, that's not a perfect number. So I would say plus or minus 3% on almost any of these. So when we start talking about vaccinations, these are just the ones, now Emily said that, you know, there's many options for where you can get a vaccination. This is just one of those three options that she spoke of, spoke of, but you, you can see the precipitous drop in the number of vaccinations being administered by St. Charles. You know, when we, when we shut down the mass vaccination clinic and went to our primary care providers and, and, and clinics. So even though it's, I mean, it's miniscule compared to what we were doing before. So this is why I'm saying that our vaccination efforts need a real, and I'm not trying to be funny here, shot in the arm to, to make it, to have an impact. And that impact is not going to be immediate, but it, but it will definitely help. So before I go to this next slide, I, I know it's going to be busy, but we, we often hear things about herd immunity. And with the Delta variant, because the reproductive number is so much higher than the original virus and even the Alpha variant, the corresponding herd immunity number needs to be elevated accordingly. And so many people are saying that we need to reach 83% to have herd immunity. Now there's, 83% doesn't mean the vaccination rate needs to be 83%. When you combine those who have been infected along with those who have been vaccinated, they are then removed from the quote susceptible pool. So let's go through these numbers very, very quickly, but here's the Oregon population that I've adjusted for a little bit of growth since 2020. 83% of that number is just over 210,000 people. So that means that we're still going to have about 43,000 people that we can leave in that susceptible population after we've reached herd immunity. Currently, we have over 7, well, we have almost 74,000 people that are susceptible. Those are those who have not been vaccinated and those who have not been infected with a small percentage put thrown in there for breakthrough cases and, and, and second infections, but very, very small percentages. So let's look at the next eight weeks and be optimistic and say that we're going to have 1,000 additional vaccinations each week for those. So those are going to be removed from that susceptible population over the next eight weeks. So what that means is we can, we're going to have about 22,600 infections in the next week, eight weeks. And what, being very conservative, about 5% of those are going to go into the hospital. It's been about 7%, but let's say because typically they might be younger, we might have a slightly lower hospitalization rate. So that means we're going to have 1,131 people in the hospital over the next eight weeks. Let's again be conservative on a mortality rate and say that 7% of those hospitalized patients pass away because of, and you know, COVID patients pass away. That has been, it's currently about 9%. It has been as high as 10.5. So again, this is a conservative estimate, but because I think that those in the hospital might be a little younger, it's not a bad assumption. So that means we're going to have over the next eight weeks, you know, almost 10 people die a week. And if you do the same kind of math, that means we're going to have about 90 patients in the hospital each day for the next eight weeks. Now this is if we don't do anything. This is if we don't mask up. This is if we don't energize our vaccination program. These are the kind of numbers that we can see and expect. And so it's not a pretty picture, but it's so, it's something that we can, we really have the opportunity to impact these numbers based on our, on our actions and our behavior. So I just kind of wanted to put it into solid figures of, of what could happen if we just let this thing run on its own. And if you take a look at this very first chart, we're kind of letting COVID in its Delta form have its run. And we've got to do something about that or our, our hospital is just not going to be able to take it. We can't handle 90 patients a day for an extended period of time. We already have 2,500 cases that are backlog for people expecting elective surgeries. Some people waiting longer than eight, 10 months. So with that somber story, I am ready to answer any of your questions if I can or hear your comments.
Well, thank you very much. I know we discussed this a little bit yesterday in preparation for this and you, at this point, you were able to really take those total population numbers and the experience of these last few spikes and understand what's going on. So this is, you know, one of those points in time where we can really start to even extrapolate what's going to happen. Thank you so much for putting it in such a, a clear perspective. This is the call to the community at this time with these huge step up in cases to just slow way down, you know, wear that mask inside of a store at this point in time and definitely support our medical system, you know, the wonderful people providing the service at the hospital.
Dr. Johnson and, and members of the Deschutes County Health Services Team, a couple of days ago, I was talking to Dr. David Cooten and he, he said that he thought that a, a very effective outreach or education strategy would be to have people who were unvaccinated, who contracted COVID, who had to go, had to be hospitalized, give testimony afterwards and talk about, you know, if they, if they, if they wished they had gotten vaccinated, if they wished that people had been wearing masks more afterwards, to, to, to talk about that and then to kind of, and then to publicize those stories. So I, I'm curious whether from all of your perspectives, that's something that would have an impact, knowing what we know about vaccine hesitancy? And also if it's something that's feasible to do, that, you know, that's practically feasible to implement?
Well, I think that that sort of, if you will, conversion statement is likely to be persuasive. The outreach that would be necessary is, is complicated because of HIPAA. So I mean, we can't, we can't just like troll through hospital records and see who's unvaccinated and, and talk to them. So it'd have to be done in a very gentle way where there was just a solicitation. I think actually Dr. Fawcett, at the end of his talk, that might be a good question to ask him since he's also on the staff and would have a better idea about how that would, how that would play out. I think Dr. Cooten, who's also a retired allergist, immunologist, has also talked about how important it is to speak in a very plain and basic way about the, the virus and we're trying to heed that, that advice as well. So I think, I think it's a very good idea. I think if it could be executed in a fully, you know, compliant and ethical way without any implied pressure on people to make such a statement, I think that would be very helpful. But I think that would have to require a lot of a cautious and careful approach so that we don't put people that are mercifully recovering from a grave illness on the spot.
There's a recent video on the St. Charles social media, I believe it's both on LinkedIn and Facebook. It's fairly recent. I think it was posted yesterday or the day before, but it was a recount interviewing many of our caregivers in the ICU and, and on the hospital floor that mentioned many times throughout that very short video, how people had realized now kind of that they could have prevented this with, with a vaccination. I thought it was a very moving testimony from many of our caregivers specifically for that Commissioner Chang. So maybe go straight to their, either Facebook page or LinkedIn and it will be one of the recent videos that's posted.
Yeah, it's, it's actually, there's a link to it in Joe Sluka's community message to near the bottom of it. It says, "Word from the ER" is the, the link. There's, you can hit a button to play it as well. It's that, it's sort of a common refrain among all the providers. I thought it was very compelling, too.
Dr. Johnson, do we have any idea of the vaccinated that ended up in the ICU, which vaccine they had? Do you keep any kind of data like that? I mean, I'm just, because I saw the Mayo Clinic results last week and they said clearly that Moderna was all like almost double the effectiveness of the Pfizer and I'm, you know, and I'm like, okay, so what vaccine did I have? Well, I didn't, you know, I had a, I had the Johnson &amp; Johnson and that, I don't even think that's on the chart. But do we have any kind of a difference that we can like help those people? Because if we're looking at people that are plus 80 that haven't been vaccinated and clearly they might, you know, maybe they have other issues so they can't be, but then we've got the 60 to 69 crowd and you would hope that they would be listening to our message because their vaccine ratio is a bit low.
I'm really glad you asked that. I did, I, I, I look at that routinely, maybe once a week and take a look at what proportion of, of each of the vaccines are, are breakthrough cases. And to be completely honest with you, we are not seeing the same thing that's being publicized nationally. publicized nationally. I'm showing that Moderna and Pfizer are very, very equally represented with the proportion of those vaccines as they've been administered in our, our central Oregon region. And Johnson &amp; Johnson is doing just fine. I mean, they're almost exactly what they were publicized, their effectiveness.
Really?
It's been really close. I have not seen, of course, our numbers are so much smaller when you start talking about millions of people. But, but right here in central Oregon, we are not having, I cannot distinguish the difference between which vaccine you, you received and, and the probability that you're going to be a breakthrough case, even as it pertains to different age groups. So I'm really glad you asked that.
Yeah, I just heard of someone who had COVID, was vaccinated and now has, I believe, okay, the Delta variant, not in Deshutes County, but I was like, okay, they had it, they were vaccinated. Okay, now, you know, what vaccine, you know, that was my question to those people because I was just like, okay, what is it we need to tell people? I want people to be, to have, you know, to be able to make the best decision and trust the decision that they're making and, you know, I just, it seems like our more vulnerable people should be reading the numbers and saying that, hey, I could, I could, I could do this.
If I may.
Yeah, go ahead, Doc.
It's okay, go ahead. Please.
I, I just think it's really important for people to, to understand that I, I honestly believe you made the right decision regardless of which vaccine you, you were given, that it is going to make a difference. And I'm not seeing one being super effective and one not within central Oregon.
Thank you for that.
I was going to mention a couple of things. One is that our, our numbers are relatively small and usually vaccine effectiveness studies involve inputs in the tens of thousands multiples for each, each stratum, whether it's age or whatnot. So, so detecting subtle differences like that is probably very difficult at a local level. The second thing is there's a lot of clinical follow-up studies being done on people who have been immunized to see about waning immunity, as I mentioned earlier. So it's a possibility that older people and others will be sort of slated to have an availability for an additional booster dose. And then the, the third thing is if you think about, none of the vaccines are perfect. So if you think about it, just say that if it was a vaccine was 90% effective in preventing illness, well, that means 10% of people may well acquire an illness if, if exposed. So we knew from the beginning there would be a percentage of breakthrough cases. So that, that is not having a smaller percentage of, of people that are reinfected is, is not what we regard at all as a vaccine failure. That's just an inherent limitation. Actually, the mRNA vaccines, having the effectiveness of around 90% or extraordinarily or even 95%, depending upon the criterion, are extraordinarily effective vaccines, very different than most of the other vaccines that we use for other illnesses. So then the fourth factor that I think Dr. Johnson mentioned yesterday, I don't know if you mentioned it today, but because we have a highly immunized population, the percentage of what we call susceptibles, if you think of the percentage that could break through of the total is high as well. So, so when we do see that the, the chart that Emily showed where you have almost, I think it's more than a tenfold difference in the height of that orange bar versus the black bar is reflective of, of highly effective vaccines.
Thank you so much for that concluding slide. That's kind of the big one of the day that we could sure use as a reference point to understand the impact to the hospital system, expected deaths and the seriousness of this situation right now.
Any closing thoughts, Michael?
The only thing I'd like to add is, is kind of on the, on, with regard to the older folks who are typically the ones who have got the breakthrough cases. It was pointed out to me by our chief medical officer, Dr. Merrill was saying, you know what, many of these people, when I look at their individual cases that were breakthrough cases, very, very elderly patients with lots of health issues that very likely would have either had a much, much longer stay in the hospital than admitted to the ICU or even passed away. Yes, they were a breakthrough case and they were hospitalized, but that doesn't mean that the vaccine wasn't also very effective in keeping it from being as, as severe as it could have been. So another thing, that even if you are older and you're a breakthrough case, you have less chance of, of a severe infection and much less chance of, of dying.
I, I think my own mother fits in. Well, she actually didn't have to be hospitalized. She is, I would say, almost 91 and pretty frail. And she was, she got her shot like right off. It was amazing. And she did, you know, have her breakthrough, but talking to her the other day, she actually sounded so much better. So it's just that, you know, now they're in isolation where she lives and, you know, what an incredibly sad way to have to be at the end of your life when you can't have your family around you. I, you know, my heart breaks for the situation.
Well, I'm glad that your, your mother's feeling better, I'm sure. And then actually to move along, per your request, Dr. Fawcett has prepared a quite detailed presentation about the current state of the art for therapeutics. Rich, are you with us?
There we go.
There he is.
Thank you for joining us.
So Rich, go ahead, you can go ahead and share your slides and maybe unmute as well.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for inviting me.
Thank you.
I don't know if you can see me or not. I can't see myself, but anyway. Are we able to move forward with the slides? I don't see the slides either.
Emily, I forwarded you the slides if you could share them, please.
Oh, there we go. Okay. Thank you. Good morning. I, I want to talk about therapeutics or treatments. And I want to emphasize at the outset that the, the treatments are evolving. Having said that, there really aren't any highly, highly effective treatments that have been developed to date. They all have been well-studied at this point, most of them anyway. And the treatments that are used are helpful, but they're not by any means a magic bullet where, you know, something on the order of, you would see with intravenous penicillin for streptococcal infection, for instance. So that's part of the reason for the complexity is we're always looking for newer therapeutics that are more effective and can be used at certain points in time in the clinical spectrum. So I want to divide the, the therapeutics or the treatments into three different categories. And this is how clinicians are thinking about these treatments more and more. I think it's been very helpful because some treatments that are quite helpful, given early in the course of disease, are not helpful at all when given in the ICU or when patients are already on mechanical ventilation on the ventilator. So in general, I'm going to divide the treatments into treatment for hospitalized patients, treatments for non-hospitalized or outpatients, and then also talk about the developing preventative treatment or prophylactic treatment. So this first table that's kind of busy, I apologize for that, is going to focus on treatment for hospitalized and outpatients. And I'm going to go in that order. So some of this is organized in the table by chronology, what was studied initially, what may have been used initially. And looking at the table to make it easier, the treatments that we're using now, at least at St. Charles and throughout the country and probably around the world, the treatments that we tend to use, both in the outpatient setting and in the hospital, are going to be shaded in green, either a dark green or a light green. And then the treatments that we're either no longer using or not using at all are in red or kind of a magenta red. And then there's a, a fairly large category in the middle that, where there's some suggestion against using it or fallen out of favor where it's, it's sort of debatable to some degree, but not supported by current trial data. So, so really, when we look at the table, the treatments that we tend to use are in green, the ones that we are not using are in red. And then in between are things that we can debate about in the future and maybe will be studied more in the future. So starting with the first several here, I want to look at corticosteroids. There, there are two categories where they are being used and are recommended, supported by trial data. In, in particular, the recovery trial was last year, the main large study that supported their use. So they are used, and looking at the table too, across the top, the, the different columns, on the left is ambulatory care or outpatient treatment, not, for patients who are not in the hospital. The next three columns are for hospitalized patients and they're divided into mild to moderate disease, severe disease, which really means people who require oxygen. And then the last column on the right is for critical illness, which is people in the ICU. So corticosteroids are used in the hospital for patients with either severe but not critical illness or critical illness being patients who are in the ICU. This is typically dexamethasone, which is quite a strong corticosteroid, usually used six milligrams once daily, either intravenously, typically intravenously, or sometimes orally for 10 days or longer. Next slide, please. Another treatment that's being used commonly now, both at our hospital and around the country, is with a monoclonal antibody that is target, targets a cytokine or pro-inflammatory hormone basically called IL-6 or intralucan-6. This, this drug, the generic name is difficult to pronounce, but it's tosilizumab. The trade name you may have heard is Actemra. So tosilizumab is recommended for treating patients with severe disease in the hospital or critical illness in the hospital and sometimes given to patients who are about to require oxygen. And so commonly in, in our hospital now, we'll see patients who are receiving a combination of dexamethasone, typically intravenously, and tosilizumab or Actemra. I will say that the supply challenges of tosilizumab, of Actemra is, is an issue. This is subject to being unavailable sometimes if the supply is low, which as I understand, as of last week, it is somewhat low.
Is it made in China, something Fawcett?
Yes.
It's, it's made in China, right?
I'm not sure of that. I'm looking to see what company makes it. I'm not sure where it's made, I'm sorry. But it was, it was studied in China. Then in addition, another treatment that has been used and is sometimes used now, which was approved for emergency youth authorization last fall, as of October, is remdesivir. Remdesivir is an antiviral medication that's intravenously administered only, specifically targets COVID-19, SARS-CoV-2. And it is recommended for hospitalized patients, typically for patients who are not in the ICU or not having critical illness, but more severe illness. And you see that down at the bottom, that middle or third, third column over, shaded in green. This is not something that's always used right now. I would say that I don't think it's harmful in any way. My personal feeling and listening to case reports and to some cases that we've had at St. Charles is that it, it, it probably can be helpful in some cases when used in combination with corticosteroids and possibly also with tosilizumab. But I don't think it's harmful. I think the problem we see is that we often use it too late. And we really should not be starting it when patients are transferred to the ICU. And you can see in that last column that there's that salmon pink color where, you know, we would not really suggest giving it when patients are in the ICU, but sooner we would recommend prescribing it, using it sooner than before they get to the ICU. Next slide, please. And then shifting a bit to outpatient treatment. So these are, this is treatment for patients who are not in the hospital. Fairly recently, this year, there was approval for use of monoclonal antibodies. There are three that have been approved, two that are available locally and then are used more often. But again, just thinking about the logistics, the monoclonal antibodies, when used for treating patients diagnosed with COVID-19, is not recommended for any COVID-19 patient who's hospitalized. So these, we need to be thinking about treating patients with IV treatments outside the hospital. So, so this presents a logistical challenge. But the treatments that are approved are a combination of vanlivimab and atesivimab, vanlivimab and atesivimab, this is made by Lilly. And the other option is casirivimab combined with emdevimab. This, this is the Regeneron product, the casirivimab and emdevimab. You've probably heard of the Regeneron company that makes that product. So when you hear about Regeneron being given, it's, it's that second combination listed there on the slide, casirivimab and emdevimab. There also is another approved monoclonal antibody treatment called cetrobamab that has been found to be effective as well. So this is something that is available in central Oregon, but it's logistically challenging for the reasons I mentioned.
And this is for people that haven't gone to the hospital, right?
I'm sorry?
It's for people that haven't gone to the hospital, so they're, they're doing okay, but they need to be doing better? Is that what, somebody that would qualify for this?
Right. So, so these would be typically for patients who are diagnosed, and there's lots of varieties for this when they're diagnosed in the community. They may be diagnosed through the emergency room, but, but not be ill enough to warrant hospitalization. So there certainly is a situation where patients are being sent home from the emergency room, they would be eligible for this treatment. The other, the other criteria is that they cannot require supplemental oxygen, I should have mentioned that too. So for patients who do not require hospitalization but do require supplemental oxygen, they also would not be candidates for the monoclonal antibody treatment. Next slide. So this is looking in more detail at monoclonal antibodies in general, just a schematic here. The circular object, that's the virus there, and the, the red kind of arrow figures that project out from the virus is the spike protein. The spike protein can be bound by these antibodies, whether they're antibodies that are generated by the body in response to a vaccine or antibodies that are synthetically created like the Regeneron product, casirivimab and emdevimab. And so the idea there would be to then oxidize or either oxidize the virus to bring them into a phagocyte to destroy that virus or to actually kill it directly through cytotoxic immunity with cytotoxic T cells. Next slide, please. And just a little more detail and to mention that monoclonal antibodies can be used, of course, for treatment and now we know for prevention of transmission, but they also activate the immune system as well, just like antibodies that are generated from a vaccine might, might do. And this is complicated in terms of activating cytotoxic T cells, I mentioned before, schooling T helper cells, triggering B cells, B lymphocytes to produce more antibody. So in, in theory, a monoclonal antibody that is able to identify and bind to COVID-19 virus can then generate more antibody production through B cell stimulation with production of, of more antibody. Next slide, please. So this is quite recent in terms of the recommendations for using monoclonal antibody therapy for post-exposure prophylaxis. And this is being recommended now, and again, this is probably one or two weeks old, but this is using the Regeneron product, the casirivimab. this is using the Regeneron product, the casirivimab and endevimab combination, either intravenously or subcutaneously. And so this is being recommended for individuals who have been exposed to COVID-19, who are not affected but have been exposed. And also importantly, it's recommended for folks that are not fully vaccinated, or individuals that have been fully vaccinated, but they are expected not to mount a sufficient immune response. For instance, patients who are immune suppressed, patients with HIV infection, patients who are taking immunosuppressive medications like corticosteroids or cancer therapies, for instance. So again, for those that are not vaccinated fully, or for those that have been vaccinated fully but are not expected to mount a robust or full immune response, they would be candidates for this preventative therapy with the Regeneron product. And in terms of exposures, it would be exposures that's defined by our state health department and, of course, by CDC, which we study very carefully. So we want to make sure that this isn't exposure to a confirmed case or a suspected Or it can also be used in the setting of outbreaks in, where there's confirmed outbreaks in nursing facilities, for instance, prisons. So if it's confirmed that there's an index case and an outbreak that is going on, then it can also be used as preventative therapy for people who are in that facility as well. Next slide, please. So again, this is the Regeneron product, casirivimab plus endevimab. The subcutaneous administration, we think, is promising, and the idea would be that this is something that wouldn't necessarily have to be given in an infusion suite, or an urgent care, or an emergency room, where this could be administered in a clinic setting. However, the subcutaneous injections, it requires four injections in separate sites, so it's a little cumbersome, but certainly can be done. It also requires, right now anyway, it'd be administered by an RN or LPN, and there'd be a period of one hour that the patient's observed. So a clinic would have to have an LPN or RN that would be able to administer this and then observe the patient for at least one hour. It should be administered within seven days or sooner, preferably sooner, from the exposure to the known case. So this is something, it's another preventative strategy in addition to vaccination that we feel is promising for the future. So that's what I wanted to mention, just the three kinds of treatment, treatment for the outpatients, treatment for the hospitalized patients, which of course is divided into mild, severe, and then critical illness treatment, and then preventative treatment or prophylactic treatment, which is something that's just been approved within the past couple of weeks. Thank you.
No, thank you, Dr. Fawcett. I so appreciate all this information. So this is the Regeneron, and this is what they're probably giving then at the clinics that are being set up in Florida currently, where they said they would be able to treat like 325 people in one day at a clinic?
Right. That would be for treatment, and so there's several options there. The Regeneron product seems to be the one that's being used most often in the news anyway, from what I'm reading. But there also is the banlivumab plus atesivimab, which is made by Lilly, which is also equally as effective. So that combination can be used for treatment as well. Cetrobumab is also approved. So there are three different monoclonal antibody preparations that can be used for treatment of active cases, but only for outpatients and only for those that are not requiring supplemental oxygen. So I believe in Florida, they're using either the Regeneron product or the Lilly product, probably, in those clinics. And again, I believe it's for treatment. They didn't say it was for prevention or prophylaxis, but they said it was for treatment. I did reference that after you sent me that information yesterday, Commissioner Dyer.
Oh, gosh. No, thank you. I just, so these people actually had, they'd been diagnosed as positive, and they're feeling a little under the weather, and so that's, that would be what you would do with them, perhaps? They would get this outpatient treatment in some cases?
That's correct. You know, we really don't have treatment that's been proven to be effective for patients with milder or even moderate illness who are not hospitalized. So there is some debate about the use of remdesivir in those patients, because we know that remdesivir works fairly well in terms of time to, time to resolution of symptoms. And so there's some debate as to whether or not patients with more moderate symptoms who are not hospitalized could use remdesivir. But then again, remdesivir is intravenous only, so it has the same challenges that the monoclonal antibody treatments have. But for individuals who are not hospitalized and who have COVID-19, and especially for those that have risk to be hospitalized or risk for more severe illness, so those that are immunocompromised, those that have other medical conditions, we really want to treat them before they're hospitalized. And so this is probably the only approved, well-studied option that we have right now. That is with the monoclonal antibody products, with three that I mentioned.
So Rich, just, this slide, it talks about PEP, so presumably the post-exposure prophylaxis would even include people that were deemed high-risk but not yet symptomatic or proven to be infected? Is that correct?
Yes, it can be for asymptomatic. So for post-exposure prophylaxis, which is, that's the correct term, thank you, George, these are folks, you know, who definitely have an exposure, preferably people who are unvaccinated or people who are under-vaccinated, meaning that they're not going to respond very well. But even if they're asymptomatic, if they've had a confirmed exposure, that they would be eligible for this post-exposure prophylaxis treatment.
Great. Thanks very much. Any other questions for Dr. Fawcett?
Just the terminology and the product, ivermectin has been mentioned. It was mentioned in a public comment last week. Is there any way to put that in a, into context?
So I did, Commissioner Vaughn, I did see that in the table. It's something that has not been proven to be effective. And I apologize if it's not in that table, it's in the slides, but it was listed there, and it's not been proven to be effective at this point. I can look back and see how extensively studied it's been. I don't think there's been extensive studies.
Well, as I say-
Dr. Conway, I don't know if you have more information on that?
It's been mentioned out there a few times, so.
Right. Not proven to be effective would be my response. And I did look at that yesterday briefly, but I don't know, Dr. Conway, do you have any other information about your reading into ivermectin?
No, I'm just, I'm not aware of any strong evidence for its effect.
Thank you.
So, thanks very much, Dr. Fawcett.
Pardon me, one more question. So is the monoclonal antibody, is that being offered in Deschutes County at this time? I think it is.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
We're trying to launch that, to make it more available. It has been available in Redmond through a small infusion center, but the hope is that we will be able to administer this outside of just one or two infusion centers, and of course in Bend. So as I understand, Dr. Johnson may have more information about this, but as I understand, the North Annex Building there on the corner of Medical Center Drive in Neff will be another area where people will be able to receive monoclonal antibody treatment, and I believe also prophylaxis.
Yeah, this is Mike Johnson. I actually got an email just this morning from our chief pharmacist, Michael Powell, who said that, and I'm quoting from his email, "We're ramping up our ability to administer monoclonal antibody infusions to outpatients who test positive, they're at high risk for admission to the hospital." And he was wondering if this is another intervention factor that I may want to use in my predictive model. So he and I are going to work on some, how that might affect our predictions for hospitalizations in the coming weeks.
Sure. Thanks very much, Rich and Michael. And actually, the sort of the public health rubric for these things are primary prevention, which is things like vaccination to prevent getting a disease, secondary prevention, which would be mitigating, and tertiary would be treating, treating serious illness. So now that we have this surge, this is a good time to be trying the things that Dr. Fawcett just described as much as we can to try to keep people out of requiring definitive hospital treatment. So if you don't mind, I just wanted to close with a couple of key messages, because we've covered a lot of very, very complicated material today. And that, from the public health perspective, there's really two key messages. One of them is to protect others. We're asking people to wear a suitable mask when around others, and that would include indoors, especially in crowded areas, but also in outdoor crowded events such as concerts and sports. And I noticed that the local large concert venue has just announced that there's going to be some, some pre-attendance requirements at the Leschweib Amphitheater, starting, I think, early October. And there've been some event-specific ones requiring either vaccination and/or pre-attendance recent testing. And then the other thing is that for people that aren't yet fully vaccinated or vaccinated all yet against COVID, given that this surge is here and it has a real bite to it, really asking people to seriously consider getting vaccinated now, and we're doing our best to make it readily available. Thanks.
Thank you. So Commissioner Chang has left for a lunchtime meeting today, but I'm interested in having the board commissioners maybe put out a statement with, you know, the facts as we see them right now, and work on just, you know, kind of a one-pager. So I propose that we get back together and we'll have an afternoon session here. But just, you know, what's the statement from the local public health authority at this point in time with the information we have? And what's the, you know, common ground for the three of us? You know, the last few weeks have been pretty dynamic in the media and people's providing opinions back about, you know, masks and no masks, but I do support vaccines, or I always have, and would advocate for more rigorous vaccine uptake at this time. So, you know, just, I'm just proposing that we get together and try to put a few sentences together that we can publish as a group.
Well, thank you for your definitions of all the masks today, and where you say we need to protect others. But I think people, seriously, some people in our community need to protect themselves. I've talked to a lot of people, and that's why, if our Congress is giving out complimentary KN-95 masks, then I feel like, you know, I know they're harder to find, but I feel like they do protect you, the person, and I feel that's, you know, you want to protect as many people as you can, so.
Commissioner, I agree with that. I think-
I mean, I-
If people are medically fragile-
Right.
-wearing masks that will protect them is also important.
I know. I talked to someone, and she said, "Oh, I have those in my bathroom." And I said, "No," because she said she was medically fragile. And I said, "You need to be wearing that mask. I think it's really important." So, you know, if this is really so highly contagious, as it appears to be.
Great. Well, as I say, so we may have a little bit of a follow-on discussion as a board later this afternoon, just to see if there's a possible public statement to be put out in support of all the information that's been shared today. So, thank you very much.
But I'm really glad the community could hear about the possibility of treatments. Thank you so much, Dr. Fawcett, for your presentation.
My pleasure.
I appreciate all your work.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ray.
Thank you, everyone. So as I say, we do have executive session for this afternoon, is what I'm thinking. I don't know that we're going to get to it today, or is there any thoughts about, I mean, this morning?
Yeah, we have two executive sessions, one for property, and I understand you had asked for one related litigation.
Yeah, so that reminds me, yes, that'll be for this afternoon. Just confirming that we will get back together, and, you know, I don't know how long Commissioner Chang will be out of the building, but we'll go from there.
He said he would be back by 1:00.
Okay. Yeah, so that was the other thought, if it had to be 1:30, so 1:00. So, okay, so we'll just get to this next item and then go from there. So item number four, preparation for a public hearing. Tanya.
Good morning, Commissioners. Everyone's okay? Don't need a break or anything? It's been a long-
We're going to power through it and then take a break.
All right. Just want to be cognizant of everyone's comfort level. For the record, Tanya Salzman, Senior Long Range Planner. I'm here today to help prepare the board for a public hearing scheduled for one week from today on August 25th concerning legislative amendments to, it's basically a two-part set of amendments. The first is to extend the permitted retail hours for marijuana retail businesses, and the second is to modify annual reporting requirements. The board is likely familiar with this, we've had conversations about this in the past. These, both of these requests initially bubbled up from marijuana businesses themselves. They reached out to the board as well as to staff in the planning division. We brought this before the planning commission, as well as the board, to just vet it, see if it should be something that should be pursued in a public hearing, and the answer was yes. So staff held a public hearing before the planning commission on July 22nd. At that time, the planning commission recommended approval of it all, with some minor language clarifications that I'll get into in a minute. And then as part of the memorandum and the packet that you received today, you should have all of the documents from those, from that hearing and the planning commission work session, a public comment that was received, a written comment, as well as, that's it, I think that's the entire record thus far. It's fairly small. So I'll just briefly go over what these amendments are. They're, text-wise, they're very simple. So the first changes the hours of operation for marijuana retailing. They're currently 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and the proposed amendments change those to 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 o'clock p.m. And these coincide with the OLCC hours, which our research has indicated all of the kind of surrounding areas, the cities that do permit marijuana retail, they allow up to those hours. So this would bring the county in line with those. In the correspondence from the retailers, as well as testimony that was in the public hearing for the planning commission, the two retailers, there's two in the unincorporated county, they expressed a competitive disadvantage. A lot of them are close to those borders, if you will, and so, you know, someone can go to their competitor that's open for an hour or two longer, and that's, they said that's, you know, producing a disadvantage to them. They also noted that extending the hours does have the potential to, for them to increase staffing, so, you know, it might be a small increment, obviously, because it's a small business, but any employment that they could, you know, more support in the county would be helpful to them. So that was their thoughts about extending those retail hours. And the planning commission was in support of that. The second, second component is concerning annual reporting. The board did receive a request from a producer to modify or remove the annual reporting and inspection requirements for marijuana-related businesses. The main argument was that it would reduce redundancies for the business owners and secondarily, some operational capacity strains on staff. It does, it does take a decent amount of resources for staff to, to do this. I'll just briefly go over that annual reporting process. Every year, right now, we send out, staff in the planning division sends out a letter to all of the existing marijuana businesses, both licensed and unlicensed, usually in around December, asking them to fill out an annual reporting statement verifying their conditions of approval, for instance. Yes, we're still using the same odor control system. Yes, we're still growing this amount of canopy, that type of thing. They submit that in February, and then later in the year, we, staff, conduct site visits to each of those, each of those properties. We're about to initiate that for this year, probably in the next few weeks. This year, we'll probably have approximately 34 businesses that we'll be inspecting. And in the previous reporting years, 2018, 2019, and 2020, staff observed 100% compliance with those observable conditions of approval. Those are for those who are licensed, so they're already operating, they have inspections from the OLCC as well, which I'll touch on in a second. For those who are in the queue, as we call it, those who have local land use approval but they're waiting for their license for OLCC, I believe that's around 15-ish at this point, we verify to the best of our ability that they are not producing marijuana. So it's a kind of two-tiered inspection, depending on if they have their license or not. And so OLCC, they're the licensing authority for recreational marijuana. They do their own inspections. They're slightly different, but there is an overlap in terms of how much marijuana they can produce, security cameras, secure waste disposal, things like that. So they do do those inspections already. They also monitor things like worker compliance, things that the county does not look at. at, because they do, they're not coming at it strictly from a land use perspective. So with all that said, the text amendment adds text to state, "If directed by the Board of County Commissioners, an annual report shall be submitted to the Community Development Department." Previously, it just said, "An annual report shall be submitted." So this gives discretion to the Board of County Commissioners. And I'll note that during the planning commission hearing, there was some discussion about that particular language, and, you know, this could be discussed in the actual hearing process next week. Initially, we just, the, just changed the text to say, "An annual report shall be submitted if requested," and that was viewed to be a little bit vague. We wanted to make it clear that that would be coming from the board, and what that process is kind of remains to be seen. Staff envisions potentially checking in with the board around this time every year to see if the, if the board believes we should proceed with that year's annual inspections. So this was the language that we're putting forth for this, this hearing. Of course, we're open to the consideration of, of changing that and finessing that, but that's where it is right now. We've submitted findings summarizing those amendments, stating that they're in compliance with the planning goals and the comprehensive plan. And then lastly, for consideration is emergency or non-emergency, and that obviously can come up in the hearing, but just to put it out there now, the timing of emergency versus non-emergency doesn't necessarily affect the annual reporting, because there is a little bit of time before that would have to be decided upon, but it does have the potential to affect retail operations. So I know the retail operators were, you know, expressing their support for changing them as soon as possible, so that would be what the emergency, adoption by emergency would potentially affect. So I'll just put that out for their, there for consideration by the board. So I'm happy to answer any questions or go into more detail if the board would like. That's all I have.
I don't have any questions at this time. So we will have a public hearing, what, next week then?
Yes, next Wednesday.
Great.
And was there a, a participation at the planning commission for a public hearing? Or has there been a public hearing, I guess, with the planning commission?
Yes, yes. Sorry, I didn't note that, but yes, there was one, one retailer participated. They provided verbal testimony in support of the retail hours extension.
And that was it?
And the other submitted a letter, which is included with this packet as part of the, of part of the records.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, yeah, what happened at the planning commission? Yeah, my thought process.
Everything has been, all the comments have been related to the planning commission process. There haven't been any additional comments since then.
Great.
Okay. Just a couple, a couple little items in there. Thank you for bringing it this far, and we'll, we'll see it next week.
Thank you very much. See you.
So any other note before lunch break?
Well, I think we were planning on during other items, whether you do it now or this afternoon when Commissioner Chang's back to kind of regroup with you in County College for this fall.
Yeah, let's do that this afternoon, too, then. So, yeah, let's take our lunch recess now, and we'll be back for 1:00 and finish up today's meeting. Welcome back. So this is our afternoon session for Deshute County Board of Commissioners. So we just handed out a draft statement. As I say, just this morning, I was just taking bullet points as we went through. So this, so bullet points were provided to Whitney, and then she kind of made some sentences out of it. So this is just a starting point, if, you know, it's just a good time to take a moment and, you know, try to put out something as the local public health authority, because obviously differing opinions about the priority severity and recommendations and topics of the day. So if you want to just take a moment, any feedback or ideas?
Maybe you could, to add to seriously sick, you could say and hospitalized. You know, I think that that's one thing that could be there.
But I just got off a phone call with a, a friend that I knew he had COVID, but of course, I just found out he had a antibody treatment, just like we heard about this morning. So the end of our session today was Dr. Fossett talking about some of the therapeutics, and one of them was the monoclonal antibodies, that it's being, it's happening now, so.
Well, it definitely needs to happen now, and I'm glad that we were able to have that on our Facebook page in order for the community to know that they, you know, if they get COVID and they're not quite there, you know, call your doctor up and get this treatment. I think it's quite helpful.
So which paragraph are you referring?
You know, it's the fourth one. It says, "If a vaccinated person does get infected, they are much less likely to get seriously sick." I just said and hospitalized? And/or hospitalized? I don't know. I just think people don't want to end up in the hospital.
And that's, yeah, I mean, that's, that's a good point, which, yeah, would lead to hospitalization or anything like that. So any thoughts on this as a statement?
Yeah, sorry, I missed the, the conversation, because I was at that, that infrastructure event. I think I, I like, I like what's in this. Yeah, you know, key points that I'd want to make, that vaccinations reduce the likelihood that you'll get COVID and that you'll get a severe case, that's in there, just the, the urgency of this moment when our, our case counts are, are higher than we've ever seen in the whole pandemic, that's in here. What are, how do we, where do we put this out in a way that it'll actually, you know, potentially get to, you get to more eyes than, than our, the usual suspects who track the county closely?
So, yeah, Whitney's here, and then Morgan Emerson was involved with this, too. So I think the, I mean, my vision is, is that this is, it's a statement from the local public health authority, you know, because it's just kind of been going back and forth the last two weeks. As I say, the, I met with the governor, remember? It was like Tuesday or Wednesday, and then by the end of the week, she had put a mask mandate in, and then which started this kind of uproar about who's doing what and who's, who's panicked is the next guy, right? You know, it's just kind of back and forth right now. So this would just be a reference point that the local public health, you know, this is the local public health authority, the three of us after today's update are putting out this statement. So it's just a little unique, but it'd be the same channels, media, but it can be our Facebook, and, you know, people are following this right now.
Maybe we could, like, make bold, we hope you'll join us in doing everything, just, like, really, I don't know, just make it a little bit darker, if that's possible, in the press release.
I'm happy to do that. Sorry to hop in, but I'm tracking you.
Thank you very much. So any other thoughts about, yeah, any different publishing path or?
The third thing.
Airtime and the TV?
The, the, the third thing I'd love to do with this is to send this to all of the people who've contacted us in the last two weeks. You know, the hundreds of people who've contacted us in the last two weeks, just to kind of make our position clear.
Well, and that's definitely a tool here for that purpose, because I've had, you know, I've responded directly to some, kind of cut and paste to others, but, yeah, it's, it hasn't been a blanket kind of, and as I say, for all three of us to say, okay, this is our statement, for today, you know, it's today.
But is it, is it more than twice? Isn't it more than twice as contagious? I thought it was more than, more than that. Isn't this, like, highly contagious? I mean, what is, what are we recommending? Whitney, do you know what the, what the Health Department is saying?
The contagious language came from the brief collaboration I was having with Morgan Emerson, but we're concurrently having this reviewed by Dr. Conway and Nahad as well. So we'll make sure to just flag that paragraph and, and double-check that with them prior to, to formalizing and finalizing this.
Because if you can get it just walking by somebody, then before, they used to say, you know, stay your six feet, do all that, it just seems like it's more than, twice isn't really adequate to say how contagious it really is. But, you know, check with them. They're the experts.
I will do that.
So, yeah, I mean, I guess the three middle paragraphs are all talking about getting vaccinated, and that, that was one of the themes that, you know, I feel strong about, the fact that, I mean, it's always been there, you know, getting to the vaccines, having the mass vaccine clinic, and now seeing the efficacy of the vaccines. This is another point in time, you know, like today, go get your vaccine if you haven't got it yet. So, and I don't know if we need to change the words, I'm just saying it out loud.
No, I, I, I really like the wording in this, in this statement.
And Commissioners, just for visibility, I'm tracking some message traffic back and forth from Health Services. We might finesse the first paragraph to say in the past seven days rather than the past week. There's some technical nuance to that, so.
Yep.
I'll probably, and that's a minor, minor update.
Yeah. As I say, these are from my bullet points from the meeting today, so that's just how I started it. Okay. Well, so, as I say, it's a statement to the, you know, as, as the local public health authority of Deshute County for August 18th. Are we all supportive of the wording? Do you want to?
Yeah.
So possibly hospitalized or seriously slick, you know, the, in the fourth paragraph?
Actually, I would clarify the second to the last paragraph, where it says there's currently 42 Deshute County residents in the hospital. I would say COVID-positive residents, because there are more than 42. I, I think that clarification might, I know you're trying to cut the words down, but I just think that would be better.
That's a good catch.
This one sentence, "We're all ready for the pandemic to be over, but our recent cadence counts show us that we're not done yet." I, I almost feel like that could be, could be stronger.
You mean, we're really ready for it to be over, or we're really not done?
We're, we're really not done yet, or, I mean, just, yeah, that we're, we're, we're really not done yet.
Well, and as I say, I mean.
That, you know, like, you know, we need to redouble our efforts, or, you know, we, we need to, you know, it's like we need to do more than we've ever done before, because it's, because the Delta variant is so, is so fierce.
Well, so I think about that, you know, it's not that hard. I mean, you know, as I say, wearing a mask, so last week, I was wearing a mask, walking down the hall and taking it off at the desk. This week, I'm wearing it at the desk, I'm wearing it at the store. So I don't, I don't see it as a hard effort, it's just a prudent effort.
Right, yeah.
You know, it's not, we're not pushing a boulder up a hill. I mean, maybe we are, but, you know, it's, you know, that's my thought. I mean, the wording around just prudent efforts by any, every.
Yeah, so these, these things aren't, you're, you're right, these things aren't hard, but we need everybody. Maybe that's, maybe that's what I'm looking for. We need everybody to, everyone to, everyone to do their part and join, join the effort.
Yeah, so welcoming statement.
Yeah.
I can finesse that paragraph a little bit, and what I'll probably do is try to get the board a clean final copy with all of these updates before you conclude today's meeting, if, if that's how you'd like to proceed.
Sure, yeah, I mean, as I say.
Sounds good, Whitney.
Sounds great.
Important time to try to put something out like this.
Thank you, thank you so much for putting together this excellent statement on such short notice.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you to Morgan for the help as well. Does the board, just to check one quick thing, would you like to issue this today, or do you want to issue it tomorrow morning?
Oh, whenever it's ready.
What's better, yeah, what's better for the news cycle?
Today? It depends how long your meeting goes today. If you go late into the day.
We'll be done in an hour and a half. It won't take that long.
Okay.
I would say today, Whitney.
Yep, we'll aim for today.
I'll shoot for this afternoon, and perhaps add a note that you're available to do interviews this afternoon, if that works.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We were actually 10th in the state yesterday with our 94, shockingly enough. We were 10th with most cases, so, yeah. It's definitely making its rounds in Oregon.
The, the situation in southwest Oregon is horrible.
Yeah, well, and it's about hospital capacity, too. Okay, so back to, yeah, any other items in there, other than that, we're going to go to a couple executive sessions.
Commissioners, I talked to each of you individually earlier this week, just given the subject matter that we've been talking about with the resurgence of COVID cases, what your thoughts were in holding County College this fall. So each of you gave me some feedback, or why don't you come on up? I asked Laura to put together kind of some notes on, with different options, and what that might look like in terms of holding it this fall, and what modifications might be necessary, or postponing it, other, you know, other sorts of considerations, so.
Great. So I'm happy to go through the different options with you, if you'd like to, I can go into detail about kind of what the.
What's, what was, what's the first date of the first session?
August 31st, the end of this month.
Two weeks from now. Yeah, I mean, so, as I say, when, in discussions, I thought, man, maybe we can just have a, you know, a big introductory night and then call it done, but right now is the time we're managing COVID, so two weeks from now might not be the time to do it.
I said to postpone it, that was.
Yeah, so, I mean, I was just toying with, how can we not postpone it?
Right, I know. I, I mean, you know, we were supposed to be in Hermiston today, and without got postponed, because the positivity in Yumato County was 28%. I know they were upset with ours, but, yeah, so I, I just feel like it's, unfortunately, it's a good idea to postpone it, because I were not only putting those people at, at risk, but we're bringing in a lot of people, and then our employees that are going to be stepping up and giving the presentation, you know, they're going to be maybe in a position where they're not behind Plexiglas or anything, and if they're, you know, that's my.
Also explore virtual options, if that's the will of the board, we could. We could pre-record. It's not ideal. It is, it is an option, but just wanted to throw that out there as well.
I, I feel like there's tremendous pent-up demand for, for this information, so I'm, I'm reluctant to postpone and kind of create a further backlog of, of demand for, for this information in our community. And I, I do feel like if people are vaccinated, and if they do wear masks, life is pretty safe. But, yeah, I, I definitely also appreciate the, the concerns about, about our, our current COVID infection rates, so. If there were ways to proceed with County College, bump up the spacing a little bit, deuce things outside, you know, September, October, into early November, are some of the most, assuming there's no, not any smoke, some of the most pleasant months to be outside in, you know, in our, in our community. You know, I, I, I would, I would like to meet some of the demand for this information and this, this education and awareness raising in our community. But, I, you know, I definitely appreciate the concerns as well.
We had put together an option that kind of creates a condensed program, where maybe if we're trying to have outdoor sessions, if we would like to have the program end before October, where maybe weather wouldn't be so great, we could try to have outdoor sessions in a sort of a condensed four or five-week intense program. That was one of the options we had explored also.
And I lead toward, I lean towards that. I mean, I'm envisioning if we had this, just open up the walls here, everybody spread out, and just get your own space, we could sure have a great conversation in this room with, you know, 20 people or, what's the number that we're trying to put?
In your, previously, our maximum has been about 28.
Yeah.
And that's in some of our other meeting spaces, that's pretty maximum capacity.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Well, and 28 almost sounds like a lot relative to a cohort right now, too. But yeah, so I was just saying 20-something, you know, we could handle it in this room pretty easily and safely. And not, not all situations are going to be like, you know, like that. You know, getting out to the road department, walking around the vehicles, you know, the big rigs, be plenty of room to do that, but getting into the DA's office and being in a, you know, a courtroom or a meeting, you know, it's just, there's going to be whole different situations.
We know space is at a premium. Would there be, I, I mean, I know that, I, I know we had envisioned a certain order of, of departments, and there may be, you know, just in terms of the information flow, there may be a logic to that, why one department comes before another, but I, I mean, if, if you could, if you could reshuffle without, like, impacting curriculum too much, you know, maybe we could strategically reshuffle so that, you know, departments where they can host outdoor activities go earlier, or departments that have, you know, larger meeting room spaces could go earlier, and, and other, other places, you know, the kind of the, the worst COVID scenarios we save till later, just so, you know, hopefully, that, hopefully, this, this fifth surge will be subsiding, you know, in, in October sometime. I, I don't know, is that, is that a potential strategy?
It definitely could be, yes. Thinking about just at this point, looking at room availability for allowing for more space, and that has the potential to, maybe some departments would have to forego their tours that they would typically provide. We also have some that do vehicle tours where it's a much smaller space, so we'd want to also look at that, possibly reserving more vehicles, having more people available to drive, that sort of thing. We'd have to look at those options as well.
So, yeah, I'm supportive of proceeding, providing a lot of flexibility. It's the sense of departments and functions of the county that we're offering, you know, because when you see something on the news, you forget that, oh, yeah, the road department and the health department and solid waste and the, you know, just all the different things, the assessor, the treasurer, the clerk, you know, so that is a lot of value there, and let's just do it in a safe fashion. Here we go.
So I will mention also, one of the logistical pieces we've been discussing is typically in a normal year, we would provide food. That may present its own challenges this year as well, so I wanted to maybe check in with you about that as well.
I'd offer just flexibility, you know, I mean, if, like, a room like this, possibly, you know, a table, walking by and grabbing something is going to be easy to do. Other locations may not work as well.
Erin just shot an email, wants you to be aware, Tuesday night, CDD usually has this room.
So we can't offer it for you tonight, yeah.
So just be aware of that, she said.
No, that's a good point, because, yeah, this can't be.
We always, we filled up.
This can't be the backup solution for each of them then, too.
Just wanted you to be aware of that.
Yep.
There's the messenger.
We filled up the other, that end of the room for the county college when I was attending. I mean, it was all full with the 28 people.
Yeah, it was a full room.
So, so where are they going to go then, if we can't do it here on Tuesday nights?
Well, just one, the first and the last one are here, correct?
Well, if we wanted to provide that as an option for some of the other places that have kind of a smaller.
Yeah.
Right.
Or can't go outside, we could look at other nights other than Tuesday.
Well, yeah, I'm thinking maximum flexibility, but yeah, we don't want to add, we don't have to put a lot more resources into the effort that we were thinking we were going to do, because it's a commitment. I know it's a commitment, but it's value, value is the two-way conversation with the department heads and other elected officials, too, with a group of people from the community.
I'd suggest that we make an effort to, to do a condensed version, see what it looks like, see what rooms are available, touch base with the departments, involve them on what options they might have, and just see what we might be able to pull together, and then we can bring it back to you on Monday or Wednesday next week, and you can make a final decision then.
A bit more on paper?
I mean, there's, yeah, there's a lot to it. It's not just moving locations and meetings around. You know, the, the participants have been, you know, told that it's every Tuesday night for, you know, two months, so we'll have to touch base with everyone to make sure, you know, departments and participants to check availability, and then just, we'll have to basically redo sort of the whole thing in terms of activities and location and logistics to see if we can pull it off. So we'll try and do that, and then we can bring it back next week, and you can see if that still meets your expectations, and we can make a final decision then.
In the meantime, the people who've applied for County College, what, what can you, what have we said to them so far about, you know, selections and, and kind of go, no-go?
Currently, they understand that we're reviewing applications, so I have, the next step is to run background checks on those that have been selected for the program, and then finalize that roster. So the background check, I believe, process takes about a week, and so we're, we'll be coming up on that, that notification time as well, pretty quickly here.
Well, and.
I, I mean, if people, if people put in their application for this, and we're, we're getting very close to the first session, it seems like we should tell everybody something. Just, just kind of give them a heads up on, I, I don't know, that.
Yeah, no, tell them that, you know, the, the board is in discussions about what it may look like this year. Yeah, all options are on the table, and it's just a very dynamic time because of COVID.
And we're, we're moving through background checks right now, so that we can. And I, I mean, like, if it is, if people come, come back with, wow, you know, like, I'd like to do this, but it's, at this point, it's kind of short notice, so I can't, I can't commit, or I don't feel comfortable participating in this with COVID surging right now, maybe it'd be good to do background checks on the, the next five down the list beyond our, our preferred people as well, just so we, you know, we can be ready to go with those, you know, kind of additional offers.
All right.
Yeah. Thank you. Thanks for being flexible. Okay, anything else? Infrastructure?
So, yeah.
You just went to, yeah.
Yeah, Senator Wyden held a press event to talk about the bipartisan infrastructure bill that, that just passed through the Senate, and there was a, a great batch of speakers there to talk about roads, you know, waters, you know, domestic water infrastructure, not, not the agricultural water infrastructure that we talk about all the time, but also irrigation water infrastructure. Mike Britton from North Unit was there. Zach Bass talked about opportunities for the airport in the infrastructure package. ODOT talked about roads. I, they asked me to say a few words about renewal of the Securall Schools Program for an additional three years, and also about expanding funding for the Collaborative Forest Landscape Restoration Program. So there's a lot of great things in the, in the infrastructure bill that, you know, I, I think one of the senators' points with having an event right now is not just to raise awareness about what's, what's in the, the Senate bill, but also to just let people know that the House has not kind of, that the House has not kind of, I'm forgetting, I'm forgetting the word, you know, the House has not reconciled the bill yet and, and approved a final joint package, so there's still that additional legislative hurdle before, you know, we, we know that we get the goods in, in either the Senate infrastructure package or the, the House infrastructure package.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else, any other items?
No.
Okay, so at this time, executive session, this will be under 1926602E, real property negotiations.
And could I just also ask this? So you guys, you guys did do the prep for the public hearing on marijuana retail and annual reporting text amendments?
Yeah, so we did do that agenda item, and, yeah, if you see, it's really just changing two numbers and adding at the will of the board.
Right.
It's really as simple as that.
Yeah, that was, that was, at the will of the board, that was what I was, that, when I did, wanted to understand a little bit better, was what do we mean by that? And.
So this will be a public hearing going into that, and I have, I want to discuss that also. So I'm just letting you know that a public hearing will be people's input to us, and then deliberations is probably, is the time to really talk about that.
Okay.
Because, I mean, I was, I was almost ready to start a conversation about it.
Right.
We're just prepping for, and there was just two of us, so I was in the same spot as you are.
Right, right. Okay, so, so the question was actually raised, and we.
No, I didn't raise the question, but I have that same question.
But, but, well, that's the intention, is we will, we will ask what that, what that means or what that looks like during the.
Well, yeah, following the public hearing, or, or, I mean, it could be mentioned at any time, and it just was mentioned, so, okay. Okay, so this is a statement from Deschutes County Board of Commissioners. Do we want to say as the local public health authority right on the top of it? I mean, because that was my thought. This is kind of a point in time, now that COVID's getting so bad so quick at the end of the summer.
You're going to do that, you might say draft statement from the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners, acting in their capacity as the local public health board.
Sounds good, Dave.
So, local public health authority, LPHA? Okay.
Probably get rid of draft at the beginning there.
Yep. Remove the word draft. Oh, so is, yeah, who, is Whitney available, or? Yeah, so we now, yeah, let's invite.
She says she's trying, but she can't get back on Zoom.
Okay.
Oh, Zoom, it's so picky.
What we were just saying about specifically identifying ourselves as the local public health authority, that would be in the second paragraph? We, as the local public health authority, encourage residents, or?
I was suggesting in the title.
I was thinking the title. That's just, just the start of this thing.
Okay.
But you could put it, you could restate it in the body if you wanted to really emphasize that.
You do already down in the last paragraph on that page.
Got it.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, according to my notes, you picked it all up, Whitney.
Actually, I think it would be in its capacity as the local public health authority, not there, because the board is an entity, it's an, not a there. Individual commissioners would be there, but technically, I think it should say in its capacity as the local public health authority.
Oh, yeah, okay, as our county's local. So it's mentioned below, yeah.
So this has been also reviewed by George as well.
Now it's time to do more than we've ever done before, so, there you go.
I like it. That last paragraph, should it still say, Deschutes County COVID-positive residents? Because otherwise, you could say, I, I mean, i- if St. Charles is a regional facility, people might say, oh, well, 42 people from across central Oregon, I mean.
Yeah, 42 Deschutes County residents. Oh, yeah, so, yeah, because it was taken out as Deschutes County, yeah.
Yeah, it was, I'm not sure why that.
It was 50s.
Crossed out in the, in the last.
Shouldn't be crossed out.
So Whitney's not going to be able to get on, you think?
Well, she can hear us, so.
Okay.
Maybe, she just can't speak, which is kind of nice.
Okay, well, I mean, so, yeah, we're real close, and if we followed everything we said, there's not, yeah.
So add local public health authority in there.
To the title.
Uh huh. Put Deschutes County COVID-positive residents back in the last paragraph, and was there?
Well, it's actually the second to the last. Just going to run on the next page.
Yes.
And then change they to it for, in that one sentence, is that the idea?
In the title?
Yes.
Yeah. Statement from the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners, in its capacity as the local public health authority.
Well, so I was thinking in the bottom paragraph on the front page, county's local public health authority, we're urging residents to do everything they, oh, yeah, no, that wasn't, that's them, that's they. You were just talking about the title.
Yeah.
Okay. Looks like it then, that's just a few, four, four little changes. I'm sure we have a formatted copy, be able to look at it, make sure it reads this way. And then this will be a press release, not a formatted signed page, but a press release by Whitney to the media, and who are, and, you know, and then we can use it for emails, response, and.
Social media.
Social media. Yeah.
And I think she was gonna, said earlier, she was gonna alert the media that you're available. If there's any follow-up questions from the media this afternoon.
Please call Commissioner Dare for further information. Or either any of us.
Oh yes, please call me.
Okay. So thank you very much for helping follow up with that. And is there anything else for this meeting? Seeing that meeting adjourned.